All right, thank you, everybody. The hour of six o'clock having arrived, I will call to order the meeting of our common council for Tuesday, May 21st. Clerk?
Thank you, your honor. We have eleven members present in the chambers, but only ten members signed in as civic clerk. And now we have eleven. Thank you.
Very good. And one member excused?
I did not get that.
Okay. One member excused.
Thank you.
Now, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then you can be seated for a moment of quiet contemplation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll just have a brief moment of silence before we begin our agenda. Now on to approval of the minutes. Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any changes there? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the minutes are approved from our May 7th meeting. Approval of the agenda. Motion to approve made by Alder Eck, seconded by Alder DeLee. Any changes here, any amendments? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda is approved. Motion to approve made by Alder Weary, seconded by Alder Eck. Any discussion here? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and that appointment has been confirmed. Report by the mayor. It is hot in here. We've got a lot on the agenda, so I'll keep it really brief. I personally and professionally very aware of the housing crisis that exists within this community, in this state, and in this country, and I'm looking forward to this council acting on some really worthy items tonight, and doing what you all can, and what I can, and what the administration can to meet that need. So with that, we will move along to announcements from our council. Alder Prophet?
Today is the one-year anniversary of the installation of the fridge in Joanneys Park, so I'd just like to take a moment to thank everyone in the community. We have a lot of names that I'd like to list, but there's also a lot of names of individuals who we don't know who make that fridge a success. Over the weekend, we were putting the infrastructure in place for the second one on the west side, so in the next two weeks, there will be two locations within our city. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank everyone in this community for rallying around that project, and talk about the housing crisis, for addressing a little bit of the hunger crisis we see in our community as well. So I just wanted to give a shout out to those individuals making that project work.
Absolutely. Well done, thank you. Seeing none, move along to ordinances, second reading for adoption. Motion on suspension?
Motion to suspend rules, take up by amendment 35, with one roll called vote.
Alder Johnson makes motion to suspend the rules, take up these ordinances with one roll called vote, seconded by Alder Prophet. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Presley. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will use the board. And those ordinances are adopted unanimously. On to the report of the redevelopment authority.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any items here to be handled separately?
One.
One. Any others? Hearing none others, all in favor approving the remainder of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the agenda is approved, the exception of item one. Your wish is here.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Prophet. The item was pulled by Alder Johnson, you have the floor.
I would just make a motion to open the floor here to hear from interested parties.
Very good. Alder Johnson makes motion to open the floor, seconded by Alder Eck. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and the floor is open. So this is to approve development agreement 24-04 with Nova GB LLC for the redevelopment of 221 Cherry Street, tax parcel 12-112. So at this time, we would invite the developer up to the podium to give us a little bit of an overview of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Board, or common council. My name is Joey Wizneski, I'm with New Land Enterprises LLC from Milwaukee.
Just too tall.
That's too tall? You may have any upward, there we go. Well, I just wanted to say, thank you so much for having us. The community, Green Bay, the mayor, his staff, staff have been, Downtown Green Bay Inc., as well as our Alder, has been exceptional in welcoming us to the community. We're very excited to have the project be along this far. Just here to answer any questions the common council might have, I hope everyone's had a chance to review the RDAs agreement, and as well as the Plan Commission report. If anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to answer along the way.
Very good. Well, thanks to you and the rest of the team for all the work that's been committed to this project. It really is, I think, going to be catalytic for our downtown, and it sort of signifies the next chapter in our downtown development here, so really appreciate all of your work, and as I said, the rest of the team, in bringing us to this point. Questions from our council? Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Joey, for being here. I know, you know, I'm going to offer up an amendment, the one that we talked about regarding the easement, and, you know, just the only other thing that I would ask is, obviously, there are probably many people in the room that want to speak to the project, and you might be able to answer some of those questions, so I would encourage you to stick around.
Absolutely.
I think we could, you know, invite him up to speak afterwards as well, if there are any questions that do need to be answered where we need you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Very good. All right. Any other questions, going once, going twice? All right. Thanks so much for your work and your testimony, appreciate it. We've got a number of folks who would like to speak here, but I just wanted to check and make sure Pastor Jack was in attendance, if you'd like to maybe address us first. That'd be great.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank the City Council, thank Mayor Gingrich for your time, your consideration, and for service to the city that we all love. They're smarter and better-equipped people than me to talk about the brick-and-mortar issues with this building and within downtown. I know we have them, Gateway Collective has them, I'm sure we'll have more discussion further from the builder as well. I want to take a moment to touch on something else, though, and that's the heart and the purpose of why our church went downtown in the first place. Our vision statement reads, "Spring Lake Church, by the power of the Holy Spirit, will develop and equip tens of thousands of people to be Christ followers and disciple makers, resulting in an enduring legacy of God's love in northeastern Wisconsin and the world." We also have the tagline as a church of "Love God and Love Green Bay." We love our city, and we've really tried to put a good foot forward to do that, both at our Belleville location, but we've really been able to effectively step in in downtown Green Bay into many different nonprofits, schools, public schools, boys and girls' clubs, different clubs within the city, and it's been great for us, and I believe for the city as well. This is our goal, this is our calling, I personally believe we answer to a higher calling and a responsibility to see this happen. One thing you don't see in this statement, though, is specifically buildings. Our calling is not buildings. Our building is a tool for us to bless our city. That's the heart of why we see we're down here, and it's to help us accomplish our calling. Our downtown campus has been a part of living out, like I mentioned earlier, Boys and Girls Club, Young Life, shelters, Art Street, Open Counseling, Abuse and Shelter for abused home counseling and protection as well, Safe Families, we open our campus for gatherings, things like that. That's the heart of what, as I'll speak to Spring Lake, is about. First off, we're not going anywhere. We want to and will be downtown. We want to bless our city in that way, and we understand that there's a need for a tax base, that's needed, we get that. But I also want to touch, we want to touch the heart of the city, and we understand that is the heart, just as you all do. So I believe and will hold out that there is a win-win-win in this, because our goal, as your goal, is to bless downtown Green Bay. So with Gateway Collective, with Spring Lake, with the City Council and the planning that's going on, how do we make downtown Green Bay better and work together to do so? I'm not a brick-and-mortar guy, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an architect. People will speak to that aspect. For example, though, I want to make sure that as a church, if we've got a wall within 13 feet, when you're digging down for a foundation for an eight-story building, how far then does the protective fence have to be from our front door? What does that look like for our people? Things like that, that we'll get answers for hopefully, and be able to discuss that. For our seniors, our moms, our infants, please help us. Please help us for safety of our teens on weekdays, children and young families who will have to walk blocks in the winter, or a handicap who may have to fight for, keep their fingers crossed for parking nearby. These things can be done. I would ask the city, please help us, let's work together to be a win to bless our city as a whole, ADA parking, let's make sure we do it well. Help us bless the city seven days a week. As a church, that's our goal. We're not a one-hour-on-Sunday church. We truly open up throughout that. Things like permits, easements, sketches, we've sent a sketch along of what we can do to adjust some of the parking things. Help us, let's work together to see what can be done. As I've had the privilege of talking through this season of downtown, and this project with Mayor Gingrich and other members of the City Council, I firmly believe, as I mentioned earlier, there is a win for this city in this process, for the condo association, for Gateway Collective, and for our church downtown. If this council believes this building is the right move for downtown Green Bay, we will love on every worker on that location. We will bless every single resident and worker in that new building. It's more than just what we want to do, we believe it's our calling. It's why we're in Green Bay. Help us move forward together, help us move downtown Green Bay forward with you, together. Whatever else comes out of this meeting, or out of our mouths, I hope that we are clear that we want to be bigger than buildings. That it's clear that Spring Lake Church loves God, and Spring Lake Church loves Green Bay. Thank you for your time, please know that we pray for you, and whatever the decision, it will not change that fact. Thank you.
All right, thanks so much, Pastor.
Yeah.
Pastor Jack, just one sec, I was just wondering if you could just give us your name and address for the record here?
Jack Cawera, 3493 Old Military Road, Indianapolis.
Very good. Thanks, thanks. Yeah, you bet. And just before, yeah, some questions potentially from council here.
Absolutely.
Just want to thank you for your testimony, but also appreciate the conversations we've been involved in personally over the last few days, and what I've said to you personally, I'll say publicly here, which is that I agree with you, that there's a real win-win opportunity. You know, I've committed myself to supporting a facade improvement grant application and project related to reorienting your front door over to Adams Street. Also, I'm happy to direct staff, you know, from inspections to planners, to work diligently with you and the congregation to make this a real success for the community, so just wanted to state that publicly. Question from Alder Prophet?
Yes.
Thank you for your comments and your testimony tonight. I was just curious, do you support or oppose the project as it's written?
As it's written? Am I allowed to say if? I support it if we can see it, but the goal is the win for all three. I am not in your seat, I am not an architect. All I can speak to, I'm a simple preacher, all I can speak to is can we do what we're called to do within the city? If the answer is yes, then I am a firm yes. And as the mayor mentioned, we've talked to architects, we've looked at, like, what can we do to do this well on both sides?
Yeah. So if those conversations continue, you would be in support of this project?
I see ways that we could be, work together and support.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, seeing no other questions, thanks a lot for your testimony.
Thank you.
And then I did just want to see if Mr. Eastman, Mitch Eastman, wanted to speak. I know he's here, if not, that's fine.
I'm here, but Pastor said it all.
Sounds good. So we will move along then to John Wurch. And then just a reminder, and I should have done that before the pastor approached, but just state your name and address, please, for us, for the record, and then customarily we allow for three minutes for testimony, so, Mr. Wurch?
Okay, my name is John Wurch, and I live at 101 Cherry Street, so I'm a neighbor here, and I am in favor of the project as presented. I think a city of our size requires a very vibrant, growing downtown for the safety of all people, and the enjoyment and quality of life of the citizens downtown and the surrounding area as well. And I just think we should continue with the progress we've had. You look at things like the Meyer Theater city deck, which I'm sure at times was controversial when that was built, the metro, we've had so much progress in downtown Green Bay, and the council and people that work for the agencies around here have worked so hard to build back and up downtown Green Bay, so I just really hope that the project moves forward, and we put that in your hands. Thank you.
Thanks for your testimony, any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Next we have Sarah Williams.
I'm just going to wait one second until my board members want to come up with me.
Oh, okay.
If that's okay.
Sure.
Sarah Williams, 1370 Mesa Drive, Ashwabanon, Wisconsin 54313, and I am the community organizer for Joshua. Members of the City Council, community leaders, and fellow residents, I would like to read a statement from Joshua Spiritual Leaders Caucus in support of the Gateway Collective. Joshua is a coalition of faith, can you guys hear me? Faith communities in Brown County addressing systemic issues of injustice. Two of our priorities right now is around issues of lack of affordable housing and housing insecurities. As the spiritual leaders of Joshua, we affirm our shared values of faith to care for our siblings, seeking affordable housing and those without homes. We affirm the work of Gateway Collective to live into these values and provide services needed to equip people to find sustainable housing. We urge your support for the Gateway Collective, a transformative initiative that aligns with our faith values and addresses the pressing need for affordable housing in Green Bay. We urge you to rethink approval of New Land Enterprises' project of luxury apartments that would severely hinder this project. Our faith teaches us to love our neighbors. The Gateway Collective embodies this principle by creating a true sense of community. Neighbors will interact, share life experiences, and support one another, fostering a stronger, more connected Green Bay. By developing affordable housing, the Gateway Collective contributes to stabilizing housing markets, stable homes lead to healthier families, improved educational outcomes and economic growth. As stewards of God's resources, we recognize the value of repurposing underutilized properties. The Gateway Collective's plan to convert the Bay Lake City Center into affordable housing aligns with responsible stewardship. Our faith calls us to care for the vulnerable. Supporting the Gateway Collective is an embodiment of this responsibility, ensuring that all residents have a safe and dignified place to call home. In supporting the Gateway Collective, we honor our faith, ensuring that all residents have a safe and dignified place to call home. In supporting the Gateway Collective, we would just like to say thank you for your attention and consideration.
Thanks for your testimony. Questions from council? All right. I would just like to say I agree with everything you said, except for opposing the new land development. So my question to you is whether or not you think you have to choose one or the other?
Right now, we have an extreme lack of affordable housing in Green Bay, and the prices of the luxury apartments that would be going in is astronomical, and most, a lot of people can afford it, but a lot of people can't, and I also work in social work in Green Bay as a case manager at the Salvation Army, so I literally work with folks that are on the street experiencing homeless in those populations of people, and I would prefer to see something else go up, and I know how hard they've worked at what they've been doing, and for how long, and to see it kind of stall, or not maybe happen at all, is difficult for me to see.
So your position is we should only be supporting affordable housing developments in the city?
No, not necessarily. We have to figure out some sort of financial base, obviously, for taxes, yes, as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Alder Presley?
So, thank you for your testimony. We did have a housing study a couple of years back that identified a need for housing from the gamut, from affordable to luxury housing.
Sure.
And I mean, there are people who can afford the luxury housing, who are living in the less-than-luxury housing, and buying up those units and increasing the prices of those, so would you say that, I mean, I guess my question is sort of the same, does one preclude the other? Can we not have both?
I think that we can have both, I'm just wondering, could we figure out a different place to do it, or how are we going to do that, just like the pastor just said, you know? Is there some way to come to some sort of a medium so that the Gateway Collective can still happen without much more hindrance to the project, because I feel like they've already had extenuating circumstances and issues that they've had to overcome. I definitely think that both need to happen, just somewhere else.
Any other question? Alder Morgan?
Sorry.
That's right. Alder Eck?
Okay, just wanted to verify, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So, my understanding, this isn't, this particular thing is not a stumbling block for Gateway Collective, that's two different issues here, so this project is not stopping anything with Gateway Collective. Do you understand that, right?
Yep.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your testimony.
Yeah.
Next we have Jim Ray. Oh, I'm sorry, did not want to speak, so, we've got your comments, though. Next we've got Michelle Becker.
Hi there, my name is Michelle Becker, and I live at 1254 Reed Street. I've been living in this city for, you know, the last 25 years, and I love this city, I wouldn't want to live anywhere else, so I want to put that first. I'm also a member of Spring Lake Church, so I'm here to speak to this project, because at that church, I do volunteer, I'm a nurse practitioner by education, and so I volunteer for our safety and security team downtown. My heart really believes that a church is not an elite club, a church should look more like a hospital, because it's a place for the wounded and the sick at heart to go, to be helped, and to find resources that really can come around them, and I believe that Spring Lake tries to do this in every aspect of the citizens' lives. And as part of that, we have people that come in with issues such as drug addiction, alcoholism, unmedicated schizophrenia, and so there are risky behaviors and dangers. We do keep, for example, we keep a few doses of Narcan handy for if somebody were to have a medical crisis, because it's the responsible thing to do, and if you're providing services to a population that needs that, you should be responsible to provide the whole gamut of services, and not say, oh, well, you know, they got high, so they don't belong here. That's not, that's not our heart, that's not what we believe. And so you'll see me at the back of the church with my big orange medical bag, and if I needed to call 911, one of my personal concerns is that, at least during the construction, that we have easy access for the ambulances to come in and take the person to the hospital. So that's one thing that I'm thinking of, and also, if that building, if the building goes up as it's planned, it doesn't leave very much space between the front of the church building and the back of the parking ramp, so that kind of, as a female, that does make me a little nervous because of the shadowy aspect that could happen there. So I think if I were to give you my personal win-win ideal, would be if the plans for the building, not to not do the building, but if the plans for it could be just rearranged a little bit to pull back just a little bit from the building to allow just a little more space in there for things like emergency personnel, lighting, you know, safety, things like that. Overall, I do support development for Green Bay.
Ma'am, your three minutes has expired, too, if you just want to give us your final thoughts?
That's it, I do support development for Green Bay.
All right.
And I just wanted to give you my heart. Thank you.
Very good, thanks so much. Any questions? All right, thank you. Next we have Michael Joyce. And then just for the gallery, appreciate, you know, the rounds of applause and everything, but we don't customarily allow for people to applause or show disapproval, so if you can just kind of sit quietly and appreciate all the great testimony, we would appreciate that.
Hey, guys, my name is Michael Joyce, 515 Melrose Avenue is my home address. I own the business across the street from the proposed development site, I am opposed to it. I want to give you just kind of a little bit of an introduction as to how our business model works. You know, Monday through Thursday, slower days, right, but we really make, hey, we pay all the bills on the Friday and Saturday, right? And it's been a good business, it's been profitable, and we're happy to be here in Green Bay. Hopefully, some of you have been there, I think we offer a really unique experience that not a lot of other people can offer. For those of you that aren't familiar, it's an arcade bar, so there's pinball machines, arcade games, et cetera, and we've got a great group of people that are regular customers. But my opposition, and this point of view is anecdotal, right, but my opposition is the parking. I feel like this is going to be a huge, huge deterrent for our customer base to come down there. Now, I want to give you the experience I had this last Friday, I had to come in to fix an issue that was happening in the bar, you won't usually find me down there Friday, Saturday nights, I'm too old for that nowadays, but I had to go in on Friday. I had to park three blocks away, this was a slow Friday, right? I had to park three blocks away to get to our establishment, and just taking a glance, looking at the Cherry Street ramp on the way in, that was full to the top level, the top level looked like there were some vacant spots there, but every spot in the ground level lot, the lot that we're talking about for development, was taken up. So I'm looking at the situation going, hey, we're going to lose that whole parking lot, which I feel like we do, we really do depend on for business. We're going to lose that, and then we're going to add with both the Bay Lake and the New Horizons development deal, we're probably going to add about 300 cars that need to park around the area on top of that. So I understand that we need a tax base, I get that, but I think this is going to have a really detrimental effect for retail establishments down in this corridor, at least for the next two years. We're looking at two years of development, and I had somebody that said, hey, you know, if you guys, you know, if your customers really want to go there, they'll find you, they'll find a way to get there, right? But we pay exorbitant rent to be in that spot right now. We pay to be next to Ned Kelly's, and we pay to be next to the heights, and to be on an avenue where people will hop in between, and we'll get some of that overflow business, and we help them with their overflow. So, that being said, I don't, I'm looking at a Friday, which was a bad Friday, Saturday's our busiest day of the week. I look at that, and I go, okay, we're already almost to the gills on a bad Friday, how is this going to look when we lose the 120 parking spots on the ground floor, and then we have 300 new parking people that'll need to park close by, because, again, Bay Lake and New Horizons. So I am opposed to it, hopefully it doesn't fall on deaf ears, it sounds like you guys are all really in for it, or really for this, and I understand, again, you need to have tax base, but we rely pretty heavily on that parking structure, and we'd like to see it stay.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for guests? All right, thank you. Obviously, I have a disagreement on this topic, but we're at your business for my son's 14th birthday, and had a phenomenal time, so appreciate what you do.
Cool, cool, cool. Thank you.
You bet. Next is Bill Kennard.
Good evening, Bill Kennard, 2995 Essendon Road, Green Bay. In recent days, I addressed both the RDA as well as the Planning Commission on concerns as a condo owner of 301 North Adams Street. However, today I come to you as a citizen of Green Bay and a small business owner here in Green Bay. I love this city. There's no place I would rather live and own a business than here. But when I experienced things like the RDA and Planning Commission saying on record that they've asked the condo association at 301 North Adams to tell them what it's going to take to mitigate negative impacts of this development, and they never got a response, when in fact, the cost of architectural fees and proposals is expensive, and so the condo association asked for guidance and scope on multiple occasions. The response from these The response from these committees: total silence. Yet, it's on record that it was the Condo Association that's the one who hasn't responded. This eats away at the trust in those in authority in this city. Then, to hear comments that the 30-foot no-build promise, no-build easement promise that was made, that would always stay in place, and that 121 parking spaces would always remain in place with any development. Those were promises that were made by former Mayor Jim Schmidt. And since he's no longer in office, the current administration is not bound to those promises. Or the RDA's comment that we just don't understand why the church would put their front door facing the parking lot. How is any business owner or religious organization supposed to trust anything that city leadership is saying from this point forward? That's a concern. And we've heard from small businesses earlier this week, as well as one tonight, owners on Washington Street lamenting the fact that they barely survived two years of COVID. Now, we're getting ready to put them into another two years of business hell, quite frankly. How are they supposed to survive that? People are not going to park in a ramp, walk a block and a half to grab a cup of coffee in a bagel or to go shopping. They'll simply go someplace else. That's a concern. We've, you know, when we talk about this being a catalyst project, bringing revenue to the city for years to come, the RDA is selling the property to an out-of-town developer for $1. The city is then lending the developers $8.5 million. Now, I applaud the incentivization of development, but then we're also creating the TID district. And the first half a million dollars plus of property taxes paid each year will go towards that loan repayment. That effectively makes that an $8.5 million gift to the out-of-town developer, not a loan. The balance of the property taxes paid beyond the loan payment, 95% of that goes back to the out-of-town developer for the next 20 years. At least somewhere around $7,000 for the city in property taxes. Fire, police, city services are going to cost much more than that on an annual basis. And then there's the rent for the entire project. That, too, goes to the Milwaukee developer. That's not here, good for Green Bay. So my question is, how is this in the best interest of the city? So I urge you to show your support for the city. I urge you to show, you know, basically, the love and support for the business owners downtown, which have spent so much time, energy, and money building the businesses and supporting that town. So I'm asking you to vote no on this development. Go back to the tagline that our downtown businesses have used for so long. Keep it local. With that, I thank you.
Good timing on the three minutes. That was spot on. Any questions from council?
Yes.
Alder Prophet?
You mentioned the RDA and Planning Commission meeting. Were you able to connect with staff after those meetings to?
I did not have an opportunity to do that afterwards, no.
Okay.
Nor did anybody approach me afterwards to even, we've had meetings with them in the past, so.
Okay. But those two, where you were concerned that they, it sounds like they falsely stated that they did respond or they didn't respond. You, you weren't able to reconnect with them after that?
To our knowledge, there has been not, hasn't been response up until that time. I understand there's been a little bit of conversation in the last couple of hours. But again, the, the challenge is, at that point, is, is how are business owners supposed to continue to put faith in what they're being told by the city leadership at that point? That's the concern.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? And, sir, appreciate the testimony. You invoked former Mayor Schmidt's name. So I just want folks to know, I had lunch with Jim. He's doing very well. He's in full support of the, the project, so you might want to reach out to him and understand what his perspective is on that. But seeing no other questions, thanks for the testimony.
All right, good. Thank you.
Next, we have Alexia Ren.
All right. Good evening. My name's Alexia Rain, Gateway Collective, 301 North Adams Street. Affordable housing, lowering taxes, decreasing crime, lowering city bonds, increasing the respect and openness when interacting with City Hall and infrastructure. Those were the issues you guys identified as you ran for office to represent your constituents, including those that are here this evening. The same constituents that have voted you guys into these positions are now just calling upon you to stand upon those same principles and values. I believe everybody in this room is for development. We love our city, and we want to see it thrive, especially the downtown. I simply want to ask, what's the cost? Last summer, Gateway Collective met with various city committees who expressed concern about a perceived lack of natural light in our affordable housing development in Bay Lake, some calling it inhumane and substandard. We responded by adding 2,300 additional square feet of natural light to our project, only to have some of that now impeded and obstructed with a proposed development that has a five-foot setback. While I know some people's concerns with affordable workforce housing downtown had nothing to do with natural light in the first place, if you ran on a platform for affordable housing and truly believe in it, I ask that you support and protect Gateway Collective and our needs for working families. We're set to bring a $16 million project to this community in just a few weeks, utilizing private community dollars, the generosity of many of your constituents. Consider how to ensure natural light into our units is not impeded, just because our tenants, who are also your constituents, cannot afford the same high-end rental rates proposed next door. Include an amendment to your motion that protects the needs of these working families by simply requiring a little bit more space between the buildings. If you want to see crime decrease in our community, simply consider how environment plays a role and how this proposed narrow alleyway in the heart of downtown could promote drug use, encampments, or criminal behavior. If you want to decrease the city's bonds or protect community members as it relates to taxes, I just ask that you truly understand the fiscal impact of the proposed development agreement, and don't vote until you feel confident that you understand its 20-year impact on our community and on our taxpayers, because it's that monumental. If you desire openness and respect with city officials and city staff, simply lead by example, ensuring that already established business owners here in Green Bay are protected as we continue to grow our downtown, that our concerns are heard first and not simply as an afterthought. Last year, conversations began with new land, and we are now set, as a city, to give away a prime piece of real estate in the heart of downtown for $1. You then are tasked, and I applaud you, with approving a monumental development agreement that essentially could make a very large multimillion-dollar development tax exempt, in some sense, for our community. I just ask that you ensure you have vetted the net cost burden to the city after items like public works and emergency services are accounted for in the development agreement. And that as you vet that net cost burden, I simply ask that you consider the costs and burden on affordable housing, on safety, on taxes, on trust, and ultimately, on your constituents. Thank you very much.
Any questions for our guest? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Joe Van Arum.
My name is Joe Van Arum, 103 South Clay Street, DePere, Wisconsin. I come to you as part of three different organizations. I have been a past chair for Spring Lake Church and a member for 35 years. I come to you as the son of a professional firefighter for the city of DePere, Dale Arthur Van Arum, who worked for over 30 years. And he stood in meetings like this to promote for paramedics. And he was the, one of the reasons why we finally got paramedics in the city of Green Bay, city of DePere, and all of Brown County. But I also come to you as a 40-year veteran. I was a high school math teacher. And so I come from three different perspectives. My overriding problem with the design of this building is the 30-foot setback. I come to you as the son of a firefighter. I know why there's a 30-foot setback. I would hear about it every night at the supper table. We watched Dad walk into burning buildings regularly. Our phone would ring a special ring, and when it rang like that, we knew there was a fire. And we, as the kids, watched Dad walk into buildings. There are still people who will walk up to me and say, your dad saved my life. I am so concerned about this 5-foot and 13-foot end of this building. The 30-foot is so important for fire safety. I have been told in the RDA meeting, it was kind of poo-pooed, but I, I just need to tell you, as a former teacher, we need to have those spaces so that we can get people in and out. And the janitorial staff of any high school will tell you, they can't even open the doors of the school unless they can keep it clear of snow. I don't know how you will keep an alleyway with a 5-foot and 13-foot clear of snow in Green Bay. This has been an unusual winter, but we are going to have snow again. I am worried about safety. I am worried about people trying to get out of places. And I'm worried that people will get trapped, and we will have a horrible situation. Unlike a bar or a restaurant, a church has up to 500 people in at a time. And the building that's being proposed is going to have 480 people in. If all of those people enter, enter into that hallway, that's 1,000 people trying to get out. That's not including all the people going to the arcade and going to the other buildings in the area. I am worried for safety with our current design. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? On the, on the question, Chief Knott, on how the fire department would respond to an emergency at the Bay Lake Bank building, Bay Lake Bank building, easy for me to say, could you just respond to that?
We've had a couple, a couple of statements we've heard about EMS access and also for fire suppression. We reviewed the plans as they've been submitted. We, we see no issues with that. And, and, and again, it all is compliant with the fire codes that are in place.
Thank you, Chief.
Can I ask a follow-up question, or is that illegal?
Not able to ask questions necessarily, but you can close with a statement if you'd like. All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I don't have any other folks who have submitted slips to speak. Entertain any further testimony, if any exists, from the gallery. Just approach, state your name and address for us.
Brian Baumler, 217 North Washington Street. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. As a new small business owner, I just recently invested in the purchase of the building last year, while also hiring a team of 15 to 20 employees that I brought down to this area. I believe in continual progress and growth, and that is why investing in the downtown Green Bay area was important to me. This development is championship caliber. Therefore, I support it. It is impressive and will bring positive activity to this neighborhood seven days a week. This is prime real estate for this opportunity. 260-plus permanent residents in this development site will spend and stimulate the downtown Green Bay area in such a positive and exciting way, just much more than I think a parking lot could ever do. And in respect to everyone else's thoughts and opinions, that's just what I wanted to share with you. So thank you.
Thanks for your testimony, sir. Any questions? Thanks again.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi. I'm Sherry Byerle. I'm Executive Director of Serve Inc., which runs a nonprofit network here. Our purpose is to connect, serve, and grow Green Bay by connecting Christian leaders. The nonprofits speaking here tonight are friends of Serve. I grew up on the curve of VELP and Mather, and I really love Green Bay. Currently, I live in Swawco at 13731 VELP. Thank you all for your service to this, this community. I have always loved Green Bay. It is a big town. We value hard work, pragmatism, family, and the Packers. I love it that it's among the best places to live and that we have about six times more nonprofits than a typical area of this size. They are a very big part of the heart of the city. The pace of this development approval in Adams gives me pause. I am very proud of the responses of the nonprofits that are impacted by this project. They are not against the betterment of this area, but they are asking for what they need to thrive and serve this community. Adaptions would benefit the work happening in the Adams neighborhood. I also personally would really like you to consider the character, aesthetics, and history of the city as part of this as well. I see a great benefit of engaging a developer and bringing this opportunity in. But if urgency is to please a group that's, groups that do not live and thrive here, I believe that should be weighed very carefully. It is a great opportunity, but it can be done in a way that offers flexibility and consideration, giving Spring Lake Church and Gateway Collective reasonable accommodations.
We're in a storm, and the electricity goes out.
Just one second, ma'am. Sorry. Continue.
Thank you. Giving Spring Lake Church and Gateway Collective reasonable accommodations to existing plans would show that we value good work and serving our people as well as possible in this community. We could be a model for communities everywhere by working together for that win-win. Please give considerations to these items proposed by the nonprofits represented tonight, and addition, including additional time, communication, and commitments, accommodations for the financial impacts, and accessibility, and consideration for the impact on local needs. And thank you again for your service.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thanks again. We had somebody over here?
Good evening. I'm Rick Fisher with Fisher &amp; Associates Architects, W13654 Balsam Lake Road in Privates. I've been recently asked by the Bay Lake City Center Condo Association to look at possible solutions for some of the code issues that are a result of not having an easement. There's a number of doors that exit into that parking lot currently, so exiting is a, is a real concern. And I, my request would be that, as part of the amendment, I had talked about an amendment for an easement, that that remainder portion, whatever is left from the north side of the Newland development between the two buildings, be allowed to be used by the Condo Association to aid in alleviating the exiting problem.
Any questions for our guest? All right. Thanks for your testimony. All right. Anyone else over here? And feel free, if you have an interest in speaking, kind of line up behind the podium as our current speaker goes ahead.
Hi, my name's Trevor Commons, 1105 Claus Street. I am a current owner of Ned Kelly's Pub on Washington Street, as well as M4O Wine Bar on Broadway Street. I don't know really where to start. I've been for something to happen to that lot for a long time. However, I don't think this project is right, nor the timing of it is right. We're about to have an NFL draft here, one of the biggest lifetime events of the city. And to take away prime real estate downtown from the businesses around there during that event, it's not what we signed up for as investors in that area. So just want to go on record saying that we do not support it. Thanks.
Thanks. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Any others?
Good evening, City Council, Alders. Jeff Marcus, Executive Director of Downtown Agreement Incorporated, 130 East Walnut Street, in the Bellin Building. It's very difficult for me to share this with you after you just heard from one of our fine downtown businesses. And everyone will not always agree on everything. There won't be 100% agreement even in anything. I'd like to also just recognize the words of Pastor Jack and thank him. He probably shared the most important words tonight. And we also hope and pray for a win-win-win. And we thank Spring Lake Church and Gateway Collective for the vital roles they play in our community. I'm here tonight to have our organization offer its support for the unanimous decision that was made by the Plan Commission last week and the unanimous decision made by the Redevelopment Authority last week. We really hope that we will find a way to navigate through this. For the past two days, I've been attending the Wisconsin Downtown Action Council. Downtown organizations from throughout the state of Wisconsin, networking, learning, sharing, learning best practices, learning about all the things that we do, boasting about the things in our downtowns and our challenges, and talking about events. And we were with the, there's been, there was a lot of confirmation, a lot of conversation about bringing housing to our downtowns. And what kind do we need? All kinds. Workforce housing, adjusted-rate housing, market-rate housing. And I'm very proud for the past five years. I've been watching downtown occupancy, and the occupancy of the 500 units along our river, all kinds, condos, apartments, mixed-use, and affordable housing, like flats on the Fox, have been all at or over 90% occupancy. There is a, there's, there's a demand for downtown living. And I think we send the right message to this development company. Whether they're from across town, across the country, or across the state, we would like to show our support for the significant development that Newland Enterprises is bringing to Green Bay. And getting back to my conversations over the past two days with other directors from downtown organizations, mayors and city leaders, who were excited about bringing residential to their downtowns. We want that, too. It adds vibrancy. No, we don't want Newland Development to go somewhere else. We don't want them to leave, to go two blocks away or two miles away. We support what they have proposed. This is a significant development. Many of you, as Alders, seasoned or new Alders, know and have read the Authenticity Plan dating to 2015. A significant development has been on the radar for this property for years. So I would close by saying, we, we, we're, we're looking for a win-win-win. And, you know, we hope that your tonight, your vote tonight- And, you know, we hope that your tonight, your vote tonight does not delay this. There is a timeframe that this development is on. Please respect that. And so, and just thank you very much for listening to everyone's voice here tonight. Thank you.
Thanks for your testimony. Any questions from Council? All right. Thanks again. Looks like we got one other individual. Like I said, anyone else, feel free to kind of queue up near the podium. I'm going to be bending over here. Can y'all hear me?
Christian Jensen, 301 North Adams. I'm the Director of Development for the Gateway Collective. As it exists right now, I have concerns about this proposal. Like many of the people in this room, Pastor Jack, like all of you, we love Green Bay. And we love this city. It's a, it's a big, small town. And I've not been here my whole life, but I'm really impressed and love how this city has such awesome longstanding values and how it just feels like a tight-knit community that really cares about seeing it, seeing it grow and be further as a community. But this is also an opportunity for you all to think about a number of things. Why are you here? Why are you on this committee? What drew you here? What inspired you to run for your position? It's an opportunity to listen to your constituents. You've seen a lot of passion from the people in this room over the number of weeks. That's an awesome thing. I'm sure you all applaud that. And I hope you see that the concerns that these people have are very, very reasonable concerns, that like Pastor Jack, there's many people that say, hey, we'd love a development like this to come to downtown Green Bay. But can we have a reasonable conversation where we can address these concerns and deal with them? And that's really all that's being asked. And so, I would just ask you and just ask this committee to not rush this through. I know it's been said that there's a timeframe. And if I were you, I might say that might make me pause initially and just go, hey, there's a lot of people in this community that have concerns. Why don't we say, let's figure those out first and then approve, and then approve something that everyone feels comfortable with? Thank you very much.
Any questions? All right. Thanks, sir.
Hi, Paul Buscher, 1120 Elizabeth. The city needs investment. We need tax base. This is the start to a lot of more investment, hopefully, but we still need parking for the businesses. We need green space for the downtown because it, this was a rallying point for like, for Packer playoff games and stuff. So, we need to reorganize that. And it's going to be a great thing for the city, and the church is going to have to find a new front door. That's probably what they're going to have to do. So, I'm all on board with it.
Thanks, sir. Any questions? All right. Thanks again. Anyone else? Go in once. Go in twice. Entertain a motion. Motion to close the floor made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Hankfuss. All in favor, say aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. The floor is closed. Alder Johnson, you pulled this item?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I frequently tell folks that I don't make up my mind about items until, until council. And part of that is because of the importance of this, public input. It's important to hear what our, our community is thinking about certain things, problems maybe that we didn't anticipate or weren't made aware of. And I think through this process, I think it's occurred exactly as it should. And, and part of that is that problems or concerns were raised, and I think staff were engaged around those. I know many of you have reached out to me, and, and I feel like we have some reasonable solutions that we can offer to some of those concerns that have been raised. I do want to take an opportunity perhaps just to address, because as the mayor alluded to, we, our, our procedures really don't allow the back and forth at this level. And so, I do want to at least take an opportunity, maybe answer some of the questions that were raised because as members of council in this body, we do have the ability to do that. One question that I do have though for Director of Nurewig, there was a question that was raised, or a point that was raised, that the construction of this project would create code issues for the neighboring property. Can you please speak to that? Are there code issues that are going to be created?
I have not been advised of any code-related issues. I think they, I've seen a plan that was submitted just recently from the mayor that looks at relocating the front entry door and adding some additional spaces. And I actually got planning staff and inspection staff together to look at that, and there's possibilities with that. We think that there are things that can be done. So, I can't speak to whether or not there are code issues, but I think there are solutions to those issues with regards to the entryway and the parking.
Okay. Thank you. Couple other points. One is, you know, acknowledging that we have different zoning throughout our community, and it's for, for good reason. And this particular site is, is Zone D2, which is really our most high-intensity use. The reality is the buildings can actually be built up to the property line within this particular zoning code. There is a five-foot setback, I presume, likely because they don't need it or they don't, you know, it doesn't line up with their pro forma, or maybe they're, they're doing it of grace. But either way, I think the way that this property is proposed is entirely permissible. You know, this particular site, as, as Jeff Marcus had alluded to, is part of the Authenticity Plan. It's been part of the comp plan for at least twenty years, I believe, which was really calling for a high-intensity use on this site. We've done multiple RFPs over the years. I mean, some uses that were as high as sixteen stories, I believe, or twelve. Bottom line is, high intensity, right? Very dense urban development. So, so this certainly falls in alignment with that. I do, you know, and it's not a surprise, right? This is something that we've been advocating for at least three times, I believe, we've done public RFPs on this site, just never could find the right pro forma to work on it. So, this is probably really the first time that we've, we've done that. So, parking, obviously a concern. It's always a concern in downtown. Jeff mentioned Wisconsin Downtown Action Council, that conference. It is an overriding theme that you see in any downtown or Main Street type of, of conference. And oftentimes, what I like to talk about is, more often than not, it's about the management of that parking rather than the lack of it. And we just conducted a downtown parking study that was adopted by this body in the fall of last year that actually said we have an overabundance of parking. The challenge is always making sure that you have parking at the right time and the right place. And that is what always creates problems, particularly when you're talking about fixated infrastructure, right? You can't just move it based on where demand's coming. This stall represents, this parking lot represents one-hundred-and-twenty-one stalls. Within a one-block radius, we have three-thousand stalls with On Street and the several ramps that exist in that area with relatively low occupancy. Now, there are going to be peak times and low times, but broadly speaking, the study did conclude that there is quite a bit of vacancy or occupancy. Want to talk about housing filtering, the concept of filtering, cascade waterfall effect, I've heard it referred to. But the idea is that when you build, and I think you were alluding to this, Alder Prophet, when you have market rate, it frees up units downstream. And we do have that problem here in our community. Folks that are, are higher-income earners are occupying lower-income units, and that is contributing to our housing situation. So, adding luxury units is actually a very positive net gain. Fifty percent of those units will free up downstream, downstream within two years? I can't remember. Natalie, Natalie Albert did a story on that recently. And I've said this to many people, if you were to put this on a spectrum, this project, zero percent being this is a terrible project, a terrible idea, a hundred percent on the other end of the spectrum, I'd put this at about ninety-five percent. And the only thing that I see that's missing, and, and I've talked to Joey about this, is I'd love to see commercial activation on Adams and Cherry. I want to, I want to thank Joey and Newland because they were willing to walk through the exercise with me of evaluating their pro forma and what it would look like if we vacated a couple of the residential units in favor of commercial activation and what that gap, you know, what kind of gap that would create. The reality is the gap, I think, is just too far that I, I'm not even comfortable proposing the amendment. But I appreciate their willingness to at least entertain that and look at that. Because that was really important. But I also want to say, I hope that there's an opportunity to reevaluate that ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, right, when market conditions change and that development along that area improves. The alley, if we want to prevent it from becoming what some think it will be, I think we do need to, we need to talk about that. And, and, you know, the notion that it will become, you know, a place for homeless or drug, you know, drug use. John Leroy talked about this during the Plan Commission. He said technically it's not an alley. I want folks to understand why he said it's technically not an alley. An alley implies that it is publicly available, right? This is a private, both sides privately owned. There's an easement on one, on, on both sides, right? So, that means in theory, private owners, whether it's the Bay Lake City Center Lofts or Newland, could say, we're not going to allow the public to use that. And I want to prevent that, and I've got an amendment that, that I'm going to propose for that as soon as I'm done here. So, the other thing I want to say is that we can't exclusively focus on the negative, negative outcomes of this without considering tangible and measurable positive impacts. And, and that is really critical, and it becomes a weighing game. And all of us are probably going to weigh some of those things differently, just as I'm sure members of the public would. You know, but there are many positive impacts. I want to hit on the TIF real quickly. If you want to get projects done right now in this climate, when labor is high, materials are high, interest rates are high, TIF is the only way to get this done. What's really important, I don't think it's talked about, is staff analyzes the pro forma. Joey shared it with me. They're leaning at a six-percent cap rate on residential, ten percent on commercial. That, that's very modest for a development like this. And so, I, I think, you know, if, if we want to see the deal done, that's what it takes. We do TIF on all kinds of projects, especially downtown, where your infrastructure costs are higher, right? A lot of times you have remediation to deal with. You've got tight sites. Construction costs go up. So, to me, this is a very, very appropriate incentive for what we're getting in return. And, and I think it's important to note that this is not necessarily, like, it's not that this developer gets this. Most developments like this occur where you do a call for capital, right? Investors bring that money to the table. And so, what's important about that and why it's important to acknowledge is because you can go to the stock market and ten percent a year on average and get a return. So, if you want that capital deployed for things like housing development, you have to be able to close financial gaps. And, and that's exactly why TIF exists. And the last thing, you know, kind of I just want to, before the, the amendment discussion, I want to point out the, the pace. This is, this is pretty standard. City's been offered a number of planning options on this site, I believe, dating back a year. So, so this has been publicly talked about as much as a year ago. This is not a rush process. So, especially for the new Alders here, this is pretty standard, right? When a development agreement is ready to go, it goes in front of the Plan Commission, it goes in front of the RDA. This is following all the appropriate procedures and steps that we see with every single development that comes to the city of Green Bay, and this is no different. So, this is, this has had the right steps and I think has had all of the right pinpoints, you know, for public discourse around this. And I think we've had the opportunity to respond. I do want to mention that I do believe there's a place for us to play with the facade grant. Mayor and staff and I have talked about this at length. I'm going to offer a communication at the end. It's not going to be an amendment that I'm going to offer because it really doesn't belong in the development agreement. These things are two different topics and they shouldn't be interrelated. But I am going to offer it as a communication to really demonstrate my commitment publicly and what I hope will be the council's commitment publicly. The mayor's already vocalized it, to really find a solution on that piece. But there's, there's another outlet for that to be addressed, and I think we just need to make it more tangible by offering that communication, which again, I'll do at the end because that's where, that happens on the city council agenda. So, the one amendment, though, that I do want to offer, and Attorney Bunker, we, we chatted about this a little bit through email. I don't know if you had a chance to structure language, or can I offer it up loose enough that we can chalk it up to technical revisions?
Attorney Bunker?
Yes, I did begin just some conversations with staff. I don't think we ended up finalizing any language. And I don't know if we had an opportunity to, to convey any of the information to the, to the developers just to have the opportunity to negotiate.
Sure. Okay. So, I'll offer up the amendment. I'll leave it vague enough so that staff can, can, you know, honor, if it's, if it's passed by this, this body, but just so that staff can honor its intent and work on the specific language. So, the amendment that I'd like to make is for, and this is part of the development agreement, to, to require the developer to provide a, whether it's a public easement or restrictive covenant for the five-feet setback that is currently on that lot line. And the reason for that, again, is going back to that alley discussion. I don't want it to be a privatized thing that's always shut off. My hope is that when we work on our facade grant, that Bay Lake City Center Lofts will see the wisdom as well in granting a similar easement. So, that way, we can make that alleyway something that is truly special. When we don't have the ability to guarantee public access, it really inhibits our ability to make it better. That, that's the bottom line, right? And so, we want to be partners and get that win-win-win. And so, I'm taking the first step by obligating the developer to provide that easement. And, and so, I'll let staff again work on specific language after conferring with the developer.
Would Alder Johnson make that motion to amend? Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Hankfuss. Any discussion on that amendment? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and it has been amended.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. And I just, I probably talked longer on this than anybody else will because this is my district. So, maybe others have a lot of other points to make too. But I want to thank the public again just because the conversation actually has been very, very good. It's been wonderful, and I think we've identified some opportunities that we can continue to work on.
Thanks, Alder. Additional questions or comments? Council? Alder Hutchinson?
I think, being from District Two, far east side, we come downtown a lot, and we park in that parking area. And so, when a business owner says there's an issue of parking, if the, these parking lots are, are taken up, I understand that. I know that there are parking spaces around, but the businesses on Washington really want people to park right in front. Is there a way, and I don't think here, is there a way to direct staff or if we want to, to look at parking, for example, angling parking on Washington Street? We could double the parking, something like that. Or some other streets. I think we're going to have to commit to looking at parking because we're losing a lot of public parking. And that, the good and the bad. So, what, I guess my question is, what would be the right venue for that?
Yeah. No, I think that's a really good question and comment. Just so you know, it's, it's a thought that has occurred to me as well. And we've had conversations with Department of Public Works and Community Economic Development. You know, one of our planners has actually kind of designed a, a rough sketch of, of what we could do if you angled some parking and, and made some changes like that. So, I would recommend a communication at, at the end of our meeting tonight to that effect, similar to what Alder Johnson will be pursuing. Because it's certainly something that I'm interested in, in taking a look at, and I know that's, that's true of the rest of our team as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Alder Ek?
So, that's piggybacking off of what Alder Hutchinson just pointed out and maybe kind of looking at some parking that would be specifically for handicap parking or, you know, ADA accessible for the sake of what Pastor Guerrero mentioned, you know, so that they would have a place nearby the church.
Right.
And, and others. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And just to, another good point, Alder Ek, just so you're aware of the, there was some reference to the latest rendering or floor plan that was recently shared with the city from Spring Lake Church. And, you know, some of those accommodations are definitely detailed in that document. So, it's something that we're very interested in accommodating.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Alder Johnson makes a motion to approve this item as amended, seconded by Alder Prophet. Any final discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and the item has been approved. Thanks again for all the testimony on, on this item. So, with that, we'll move along to the report of the Plan Commission. Entertain a motion. Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder DeLee. Items here to be handled separately? Two? Any others? Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. The ayes have it. That report has been approved with the exception of item two. Your wish is here. A motion, motion, just one sec. Motion to approve by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Hutchinson. Alder Hutchinson, you have the floor.
I would like to offer an amendment that the current language of, quote, "units will be veterans' preferred," close quote, is amended to, "The units will be for veterans."
All right. Is there a second for that amendment? Seconded by Alder Ek. And Alder Johnson made a good point. Just want to make it clear for everyone here, this item is to approve, to approve to create a planned unit development for the creation of twenty-one small home cottage court located at 2890 St. Anthony Drive, subject to a number of conditions. So, that amendment was offered by Alder Hutchinson. It was seconded by Alder Ek. Any comments on, on the amendment? Sure. Any discussion on that? Alder Presley?
I would like to know from legal staff if we are allowed to make that amendment, to only allow it for veterans.
Attorney Bunker?
Sure, so I, it's, it's changing it, it's changing the designation from veterans preferred, um, to just veterans. So this way, it's not kind of restricting, um, how the, um, applications are going to be reviewed for the housing units. Um, so it'll be in line with HUD's requirements for these types of developments. So it's probably the most position-neutral thing, um, that, that the city can pursue with this PUD, and most appropriate.
So the language that Alder Hutchinson offered is appropriate?
Is acceptable, correct.
Okay. Thanks, Alder, for that question. Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So does that conflict, then, with the advice that was given at the Plan Commission, that we couldn't do it? And what, why did that change?
Uh, attorney?
Yes, I'll defer this to Attorney, um, Mather, who attended Plan Commission for that one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so, just to clarify, um, this, this change in language is removing any kind of specification as to whether it's veterans preferred or veterans exclusive. It's just referencing that, that these will be made available to veterans, and then it's up to the developer or the landowner to, to Veterans First, essentially, to, um, implement the program in accordance with their own plans for doing that. So it's actually consistent with the advice given at, at, um, Plan Commission, because we're, um, making the, the PUD more neutral and, uh, leaving it up to, uh, Veterans First as the, as the property owner to determine, um, whether it's veterans preferred or veterans exclusive. And, and that's not something that the city should be, um, taking a position on.
Alder Weary?
Thank you. I was fortunate enough to receive, and I think, uh, attorney, you received this email also from the attorney for the county, David Henry, right? Um, he states, "Joanne, the Brown County Boarder Supervisor's previously approved of donating land to Veterans First for a tiny home project that includes providing housing exclusively for veterans that are homeless or at risk of becoming homeless, and that includes providing services exclusively." And he highlights it, bolds it, and underlines it. I'm putting, I'm turning the lights on.
If somebody, you're maybe leaning against the, the, just trying to, just trying to keep it cool in here.
Oh, no, I have to start over. No, I'm kidding. Uh, "The county has a long history of supporting veterans," and goes on to how they explained it. And, uh, he said, "I understand that tonight the Green Bay Common Council will take up whether to approve of a PUD that would provide housing and services to both veterans and non-veterans populations via a Veterans Preferred option." And then he lists, "Number one, should the city approve of a PUD to provide housing and services exclusively to veterans, exclusively to veterans, then that city approval would be within the scope of what the county has already approved. Two, should the city approve of a PUD to provide housing and services to both veterans and non-veterans, the city approval would be outside the scope of what the county has already approved, and the project would no longer meet criteria to receive the land donation from the county, likely making the project in jeopardy." So I, this sounds like it, it's running the risk of it being in jeopardy if we're not endorsing it.
Sure. So, actually, if, if, by taking out the designation, we are, we're neutral on that position. So it'll fit within the scope of, you know, how the county's position, and, and, you know, this was an email in response to, to, um, to my email to Corp. Counsel, um, Attorney David Henry, um, basically stating that what we have before us, meaning council, is just the PUD. As, as to the terms of the land conveyance, that's entirely a county issue between the county and the developer of Veterans First. By taking out any kind of designation, as to whether it's for veterans only or veterans preferred, um, it, it's more appropriate, and I think fits actually whatever the county's position is on this, and how, whatever determinations or resolutions they come to with the developer who's being conveyed the property, it'll, it'll still fit. So it's actually appropriate.
I think I see where you're coming from. The, the county, if they want that restriction, then before they donate it, could get it in.
Correct. It should be a-
In a firm agreement.
Correct. It should be for them to, to work out with the developer, because they're being conveyed the property.
Sorry. Perfectly understand. Thank you. That's all for now.
Thanks, Alder. Any other, uh, questions or comments on that? Um, do we have a second for Alder Hutchinson's amendment? We didn't? Okay, all in favor?
Motion to amend.
Yep, all in favor of that amendment will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it, and that amendment has been successful. A motion here?
Set open the floor.
Second. Motion to open the floor, made by Alder Weary, seconded by Alder Johnson. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it. The floor is opened. Uh, first we have Gail Noor.
Gail Noor, 13427 Velp Avenue, Swamaco, Wisconsin, 54173. First, I want to thank mayor and the council and Alders for considering the resolution and the amendment. We appreciate that. Also, um, I just want to say that we wanted to have someone make an amendment for the, the archaeologists, but I don't think that's going to happen. Um, we do have a letter from the State Historical Society that states that we are not going to be disturbing any areas, but, um, that is up to you whether or not you make that recommendation. So, I want to appreciate all of you for your ma- making the amendment, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, just one sec, ma'am. Um, any questions for our developer? Seeing none? All right, thanks much for your work, appreciate it. Uh, next we have Jonathan Davis.
Jonathan Davis, 1545 Silver Maple Drive, DePere. Mayor Henrich, City Council, Alderman, service members of Green Bay, fellow Wisconsinites, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak real quick. Uh, we've heard a lot of talk, uh, from veterans about the various aspects and, and honor and integrity and duty. Uh, I want to talk a little bit more, uh, physical aspects of this. We, uh, heard in the previous meetings about the possibility of disturbing Potter's Field that was in that general vicinity. Uh, that's a grave concern, obviously, and something that we take very seriously, to the point that, you know, we're, we're willing to have an archaeologist on site. But I do want to point out that aerial photographs, uh, starting in 1938 through 1916, as recently as 2010, show an extensive amount of buildings on the exact area we're building. Uh, we have aerial, uh, photography with an overlay of where we want to build, and while that wasn't created by a surveyor, it's close enough to, to show that there was large buildings, uh, parking lots, roads, and other man-made structures encompassing almost every inch of where we are proposing to build. So, when it comes to disturbing the ground, there's a very good chance, it already has been disturbed over that entire area already. And the second point I want to make is, a tiny bit over half a mile away from where we want to build is another Potter's Field that's active. And that Potter's Field recently, uh, had a beautification project from VFW Post 9766. The reason being is the number of people that are in there who are veterans is higher than, uh, you would, you would expect. A lot of them were from World War I and World War II, and these people, from mental health issues we didn't understand back then, to just being homeless and not being able to adjust when they came back, ended up in a Potter's Field. And our project is exactly what would be needed to prevent that. There are over 300 homeless veterans in Brown County right now. There's a very good chance that some of those, if they don't get help, will end up in a Potter's Field, the exact thing we're talking about. And Veterans First is looking to make that not a reality, and to help these people get the help they need, and to put them on a path that enables them to live a full life. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any questions? Mayor, just, Alder Johnson?
Uh, you had sort of referenced this as, like, our project. What is your role in the project?
I apologize. I'm the vice president, uh, on the board for Veterans First of Northeast Wisconsin.
Okay, thank you. Thanks a lot. All right, thanks, sir. Next is, uh, George Dexter.
Good evening, Mayor Eric, and city council members, and citizens of this great country and, and this community. Um, I am a Vietnam veteran, combat wounded, and I've been serving as a chaplain for over 30 years in the area, two veterans. And I think what, uh, Veterans First of Northeast Wisconsin, uh, would like to do is to offer veterans that would be housed in their 21 small homes, that they're, they hope to accomplish with approval from the council. Um, now, one statistic that stands out to me a lot is that in this great nation, 20% of the homeless in this country are veterans, men and women who wore the uniform of our armed forces, who on a 24/7 basis provided the security to provide the freedoms that each and every one of us enjoy on a daily basis. We may not all have the same ideas when it comes how we use our freedoms, but we have them because of the service and sacrifice of the men and women who wore the uniform. And I, and what, uh, Gail and Veterans First, our offering is a hand up, not a hand out. And I hope that you would all look around this room, look at your neighbor seated next to you, look them in the eye, and if you see something that maybe they need a hand with, reach out to them. And that's exactly what Veterans First is attempting to accomplish. I thank you for your time, and I thank you for allowing me to speak. God bless you all, and please pause and remember, on Monday, those who served and sacrificed gave their all. And I, I know many of the people in attendance here may have a family member that served in the military, and maybe after their time was done, they weren't so good inside, you know? But that was just because of possibly the horrors that they were subjected to. Many of us dealing with PTSD, myself included. And, uh, so, just take a good, hard look, not only at those next to you, but take a good, hard look at your heart, and reach out. God bless you all, and thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your testimony and your service. A question, a couple of questions here, sir. Yeah, Alder Grant, and then Alder Hutch, no, just Alder Grant?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you for your testimony. I have a question for you with our amendment that, where we just said that this is for veterans, so it's not veterans exclusive. Are you okay with that?
Um, well, I would prefer personally to see it, uh, for veterans, but, uh, you know, how are you going to turn someone in need away? But then, like I just mentioned, so many of our population in this great country are homeless and veterans, so I think there'd be plenty of opportunity for veterans to find a place here, and to become, uh, members of the community, contributing members of the community due to the outreach of Veterans First. I hope that answered your question?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thanks, you.
Any other questions? All right, thanks again, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Jim Strong is up next.
Good evening. My name is Jim Strong, 1431 East Glendale Avenue, Appleton, Wisconsin, and I'm a member of the Board of Veterans First of Northeast Wisconsin. I'm here to, uh, not repeat everything you've heard and will hear from fellow veterans such as myself, but I am here to urge your support in the recommendations, unanimous recommendations of the Planning Commission to support this development. One, it will benefit area veterans, and area veterans need to be recognized 365 days of the year, not just on those holidays set aside for those still living, or those that gave their lives in defense of our country. Secondly, another important thing to us in this community in Northeast Wisconsin is this is a step, maybe a small step, to end or overcome the housing shortage that we currently exist in. So take a look at it with that pair of eyes as well, so that by helping your veterans, you're also helping the community at large. And with that, I just, again, urge your support and hope that you'll get behind this project that Gail and Kenham started. Thank you.
Thanks for your testimony and your service, sir. Any questions? All right, thanks again. Uh, next up is Kathy Jerry.
I live at 1005 St. Charles, uh, in Green Bay, uh, in the Schmidt Park neighborhood where this is planned to go. Now Schmidt Park was founded in the 1950s with a handshake and a promise to build a great neighborhood. Mr. Schmidt, who did this, prevailed in his endeavor, and our neighborhood outside the city limits at that time was pretty much an entity unto itself and grew very close. We still continue to be a close knit neighborhood. Citizens elect government to do a job. Neighbors and/or neighborhood associations should not be forced to do their job for them, but that is exactly what has happened in this case. Brown County did not do its due diligence, they did not investigate what was presented to them, but accepted it face value. As a result, neighbors had to step in. The county apparently did not bother to check out what was presented. The Board of Directors was basically the Noors, although they have improved that at this time, mostly because they've been pushed by us and been forced to add others. Their claimed qualifications were very vague. When asked at a meeting why they would not answer our questions, they said, "We're not going to answer your questions. What kind of a neighbor is that? They say they want to be a good neighbor, but they don't even want to answer the questions we ask." It's very, very frustrating. They also threatened a cease and desist order against our neighborhood association because we were asking questions, using a Milwaukee attorney. Great, good neighbors. This is also someone who waited till the end of the day, when management at Veterans Manor was gone, and went into their facility uninvited, ordered and brought in pizzas for the residents, and said basically, "Oh, by the way, please sign our petition." Again, this is not a good neighbor. We're not opposed to veterans. In fact, we opened our hearts and, uh, our arms to Veterans Manor when they opened, by providing a barbecue for the neighbors to meet and greet them and get to know them. And we have continued this tradition every year since then. But Veterans Manor is a well-run organization. Veterans First, I have real questions about how they're run. They planned to use Veterans Manor driveway for access, but didn't bother to ask Veterans Manor if it was okay for them, which it was not. When asked about our concerns about the burial of the poor souls who died at the old poor farm and the mental health facility, they said, "If we run into bones, we'll call someone." Now granted, they say this is okay now, but what kind of an attitude is that? If we run into bones, we're going to call somebody. These folks were abandoned and death, and they're, they were being treated like garbage. This is example of how they operate. They don't operate like good neighbors. What about sustainability? No plans have been provided about sustainability of this village, or how the millions of dollars raised will be sprint, spent. Yes, there's the cost of building, but much of the time and materials are being donated. And they said they would accept people from 11 counties, I believe it was 11, not just Brown County.
Ma'am? Ma'am?
Yes.
Three minutes has expired, so if you just-
Okay.
Wrap it up here?
I think they should come to downtown Green Bay. You want people down there?
Yeah. All right, any questions for, ma'am?
Good question. Yep.
Alder Grant?
Thank you. Can you tell me what kind of things that you would like to see that would make you feel better about the project?
I'm sorry, what kind of?
What kind of things you would like to see that would make you feel better about the project? I know you brought up how successful Veterans Manor is. Can you tell me, like, things that you've seen?
I would, I would feel much better if they had a good, solid, um, business plan, because I don't believe they do. I just don't believe they do. They are, they're talking about charging $750. It's not free housing for these people. They're going to charge, last I heard, $750 for the space that they're going to rent. That's a lot of money coming in. Sustainability, where does the money go? I don't know. I just don't think it's very well-run.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other que, yeah, Alder Prophet?
Thank you for your testimony and for your work in the Neighborhood Association. I, I appreciate all that you do there. I appreciate all that you do there. Near the beginning of your testimony, you mentioned that both the county and the city did not do their due diligence prior to approval of this project. Could you go into specifics on that for me?
I don't think that the county actually asked the questions they needed to ask about their plans and what they want. You say veterans, and people already jump on board, and with good reason, but you need to investigate too. You can't just accept what people say. You have to choose it. I'm not sure if this is absolutely correct, but it's my understanding the county cannot just give land away that needs to be sold at fair market value. But that, again, is Brown County, not the city.
Anything else? Alder Preston.
Hi, thank you. What began your scrutiny of this project? You mentioned a couple of different issues, but what was the thing that led you to explore more of those issues?
We invited them to our board meeting, the first board meeting they were at, and a lot of, there were some pretty angry people there, but they couldn't answer the questions that people asked. And then, when they had a meeting for the neighborhood, what a fiasco, what a fiasco. They said the neighborhood association was behind it. We hadn't said anything for or against it. People asked questions, they wouldn't answer it. Actually, one of their presenters actually got mad and walked off the stage and left. Gail was questioned about her background, and she said she was going to be a counselor. Well, she finally said, "Well, I only have a thousand hours towards the three-thousand hours I need." So when things like this came, these things came up, we were really concerned about how this is going to be run and how well it's going to be done and what kind of sustainability there would be there. What happens in five years, or ten years, or twenty years? This is our neighborhood. We need to live there. We need to be comfortable with what happens there. And quite frankly, we have people who are talking about moving out of the neighborhood because they do not like how it's been presented and what they think is going to happen here. It's been very disruptive to our neighborhood.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Thanks for your testimony, ma'am. Next, Rick Jerry.
Let it be known that I am not anti-veteran, I've always supported them. I was recruited while still in college by a major local law firm to work for them as an investigator. While there, there were three partners that eventually became judges at the circuit and higher levels. However, one of them became the Chief Justice of the Wisconsin State Supreme Court. While working at that law firm, I gained the understanding of who's who and just how far they thought they could go without getting caught, whether it be in business or in their personal lives. During that time, I found out there were an awful lot of skeletons supposedly where they were buried, and I dug them up, revealing them to the light of day. I haven't forgotten my training or those skills and still retain contacts far and wide, including retired military JAG officers, highly decorated Green Beret officers, among others. Historically, and this goes to one of the questions you just asked, the Wisconsin State Supreme Court found on numerous occasions that public land cannot be donated unless fair or higher value is received. The governmental body does not own the land, the taxpayers do. Look it up, it's case law. It goes back to the eighteen-sixties. In the spirit of every branch of the military, the doctrine of no one left behind is being totally ignored in this case. Of the ninety-plus souls buried in the unmarked graves on the property, no one of you seems to care if any of them served or are entitled to the same respect that you demand be given to those who are known to have served. You've been made aware of the vast quantities of coal ash buried haphazardly all over that land over the years, and as it is broken down into at least five toxic poisonous chemicals, including arsenic, lead, mercury, cobalt, and selenium, and more, which have saturated with rainwater or melted snow leeches down into the dry stream bed that runs through that property and eventually runs out into the Bay of Green Bay. The Department of Natural Resources and the EPA have been informed of this fact. So the question remains, do you still want to force this ill-conceived project on an area not appropriate for its location, causing strife to the point where multiple current residents are steadfast in their commitment to move out of the area if you do? I highly recommend that you think again. There's an election coming up very soon, and all of these imported, out-of-town, out-of-county supporters have no say in that election. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? All right, thank you. Next is Michael Casebauer.
I live at eight forty-nine Marvin Lane in Green Bay. I'm opposed to the Veterans First project. I'm a retired insurance healthcare executive with payer contracting and credentialing background. I have the qualifications and the experience to provide a professional opinion on the Veterans First team and their project. The Veterans First project is basically a housing rental program for low-income and homeless. It is like other low-income rental programs with a homeless component. It's a project designed for profits. Veterans First does not have the team, the organizational structure, nor the experience needed for long-term sustainability. The Norris and Veterans First have misrepresented their credentials, qualifications, and existence of professional services. They have overstated their qualifications and their ability to provide clinical and professional services. They've misrepresented relationships and alleged partnerships for wraparound services for clinical care. There is nothing special they have in place to access care with any other clinical or mental health organization. For example, they will not be treated any differently than anyone else at the Veterans Clinic, or for that matter, any other medical or mental health facility in the city. Sometimes Veterans First talks like they have services available, like they're a clinic. They would not pass a payer facility credentialing process to be a clinic. They will not be able to contract with insurance payers as an in-network provider. They have so oversold their organizational structure and their merits and their organizational structure, and that merits questioning. The Board has already had significant turnover and, at this point, brings little to the organization. The Norris are not developers. They lack any prior business or financial experience, and they lack clinical qualifications. They are not therapists. They are not who they have presented themselves to be. They have little related experience, they have minimal qualifications, and this lack of qualifications and experience will likely result in their inability to manage the financial and social risks along with their obligations. Veterans First is not who you think they are. Further review is needed. I'm confident you will find Veterans First is not the right partner. This is not the right place, and this is not the right time for Veterans First. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Thanks for your testimony. Next is Alan Jokey. Going once? Going twice? All right, Jack Wilson.
I live at two six five seven Foxfire Drive, Bellevue, five four three one one. I'd like to say a few things for Veterans First to kind of offset some of the other things that have been said. Homeless veterans need a place to have a feeling that is safe and secure. They cannot get that while having to sleep in their cars, or sleep under a bridge, or sleeping in a homeless shelter and having to leave in the morning and wander the streets all day until they can come back. Veterans First housing will give them a feeling of being secure. They will be given training to enter the workforce and mentoring to handle some of the PTSD problems that may have occurred during their deployment. Without having a feeling of security, despair and homelessness sets in. Years ago, this feeling had led to the suicide rate for veterans of twenty-two vets a day. As of twenty twenty-one, the rate for vets had lowered to about seventeen vets a day, but it still goes on. I could not find the current rate of any publications. This is the reason organizations like Veterans First are needed. They provide more than just a place to sleep. Now, I've heard a lot of stuff here from the people. To me, it kind of feels like somebody built a house next to a farmer's field and starts complaining about the farmer. Other people have built on that property. There's been several other buildings on that property, and the Veterans Manor that's there is right next to that. I'm not sure if they were worried about them disturbing that area, because to me, it seems like there's a lot of people buried there, and I don't know how that happened, that they're not marked graves, or nobody knows who's there, and how that was continued to go on. But I just want to say, remember that Memorial's Day is for the veterans that are dead, and Veterans Day is for the veterans that are living. So it's not just a day off and have a picnic. I'm done, thank you.
Thanks for your testimony, sir, and your service. Alder Grant.
Thank you very much. You talk about services and, you know, PTSD things that they struggle with. Do you have any concerns of there not being twenty-four management on site?
I would not know that right now, but the fact is, there may be, somebody can't be there twenty-four hours a day to give them special treatment. They will be probably given during the daytime hours, and maybe special needs will be made available. You would have to address the Norris and Veterans First on that subject?
Okay, thank you. I just wanted some more, you know, with, speaking from, you know, your experience to see if you felt that that was adequate, that's all I was asking for.
Well, I guess, I guess it's better than not having anything around, and these guys are on the street, homeless. This gives them a feeling of security, which starts calming down the PTSD part of that, because they feel more secure and they're not worried about, "Where am I going to sleep?" You know, "What shelter? Will they have room for me? Where am I going to eat?" Whatever. It'll be a community of veterans too, because what helps PTSD is other veterans talking to them. There's going to be a community center built there where these people can get together and talk that stuff over. And being a vet, I had that when I first got out, but talking to other vets about it, that will leave me of a lot of questions and worries that I had.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks again, sir. Next, we have Sarah Williams.
Do you need to say my address and stuff?
If you could, yeah.
Sarah Williams, thirteen seventy Mesa Drive, Ashwabanon, Wisconsin. City Council and fellow community members, I stand before you today as a person of faith, compelled by compassion and guided by our shared commitment to justice and service. We gather here not merely as citizens, but as stewards of a vision, a vision that transcends brick and mortar, reaching deep into the hearts of those who have selflessly served our nation. Our faith traditions teach us to love our neighbors, to extend a hand to those in need, and to recognize the inherent worth of every human being. The Veterans First tiny home village embodies this call to compassion. It is an opportunity for us to live out our faith by providing a safe, dignified housing for those who have sacrificed so much for our freedom. Each tiny home represents more than a shelter. It symbolizes dignity and restoration. For veterans who have faced homelessness, these homes offer a chance to reclaim their lives, to find stability, healing, and hope. As people of faith, we believe in second chances, in redemption, and in the power of community to lift one another up. Our faith communities understand the concept of collective responsibility. We are not isolated individuals, we are part of a larger whole. When we care for our veterans, we honor their service and uphold our duty to care for one another. The tiny home village is a testament to our shared responsibility, a place where community conversions with compassion. The village will foster a sense of belonging, a place where veterans can heal not only physically, but also emotionally and spiritually. As people of faith, we recognize that healing often happens within the context of community, as others have spoken about tonight. Let us create a space where veterans can find camaraderie, support, and a renewed sense of purpose. We urge each council member to consider the moral imperative before us. Let us rise above any challenges, which you guys have already done a great job of doing and had continued conversations, and I can't imagine how difficult that is at times on both sides. And raise our concerns and find solutions that honor our veterans and uphold our faith values. Together, we can turn this vision into a reality, a village where faith, compassion, and service intersect, and where veterans find not just houses, but homes. Thank you, and may our collective efforts be blessed as we move forward in support of the Veterans First tiny home village.
Thanks for your testimony. Any questions? All right, thank you. So that exhausts the list of names here I have with slips, but feel free to approach the podium, state your name and address if you'd like to speak to this item at all.
Evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kim Nor, address is thirteen four twenty-seven Palp Avenue. I'm a co-founder of Veterans First, and I want to kind of allow any of the council members to ask questions of me. There's one thing, or a couple of things, that I want to address first, and I'm kind of concerned about the terminology in that amendment as far as not being exclusive veterans. I have real concerns about that. The county was very adamant in saying it had to be exclusively veterans, and I'm sure that that verbiage might kill the project, so I'm not sure how we can take it from there. We have addressed most of the concerns, and there's a lot of fear going on, even with back to the burial site. After we started looking at this property, the county was very reassuring that the burial site was well without our boundaries. I've done a bunch of research, and there have been some surveys, and the Neville Library did a big research, the Wisconsin Historical Society did a research in ninety-one stating that we were, the burial sites were south of the old barns of the poor farm, so we're very much north of that. So I think, like I said, there's been a lot of fear about that, but I think we have that pretty well covered. We are not intending to be a clinic. What we are, we're going to be building tiny homes, we're going to be able to invite the veterans into that, into that population, and then, once they have that housing security, then we're going to navigate them to the resources that we know of. We're not trying to be a clinic, we're not trying to make ourselves any better or greater than what we are. We're just trying to be a servant, we're trying to get the people where they need to be, and then with doing some of the resources that are out there, point them to that, and hopefully take them hand by hand into that resource. But like I said, I'd like to, anybody has any questions, I'd like to address that.
Any questions from Council? For Mr. Nor? Yeah, Alder Hankfuss.
Question, you say you're not going to be clinical, okay, but I also come from an insurance background in healthcare, and I'm a nurse. And in reading the proposal, what scares me the most is not having somebody there twenty-four hours a day to serve and make sure that our veterans are being cared for, and there are no other issues. One of the biggest issues we have right now with hospitals and care facilities is the resident, or people abusing their caretakers and other people. And that is, that's a big issue that I think, I'm just trying to figure out why we wouldn't have twenty-four hours. And most of the facilities that care for the residents that have the wraparound, from what I understand, is there's at least twenty-four hour coverage if there's issues. what I understand, is there's at least 24-hour coverage if there's issues, you know, PTSD kicks in. I mean, my issue is, from reading this, it looks to me like you're providing AODA, and you're doing wraparound. So the patient that's coming in, and Alyssa, you brought this up, she has a sober living facility right next to her. And people are admitted that are already been sober, and they're getting the support. So I'm not understanding the types of residents that you're looking for based on what I saw on the intake form. It looked clinical to me.
Yeah, well, it's definitely not. And we're not that much different than Veterans Manor, as far as having, you know, Veterans Manor does not have 24/7 security there. So where-
People though?
Pardon me?
People are there. Nobody stays with them?
No, not staff, no. What we are going to do, Gail and I, and two other part-time staff are going to be there through the day, and then we're going to have, one squad leader per seven units. So we're going to take one resident and put them through some extra qualifications, so they have to be responsible not just to themselves, but to these other six residents. We're going to be on call for that. Like I said, that's above and beyond even what Veterans Manor does. And I'm not running Veterans Manor down, but I'm just saying, you know, they have 50 residents, our maximum is going to be 25. And like I said, the clinical part of this is more just navigating. We're going to try to, when they come in, to find out what their next need is, what their issue is, and then try to get them the resources they need to navigate them to that part.
Okay. And then, where are you from a financial perspective in the business plan? Because technically in here, I wouldn't consider that a business plan that we got.
No, we didn't forward the business plan. We do have a business plan? I mean, as far as, would you want to know how much funding?
Well, we're looking, what I guess I'm concerned with is, we're giving land, we're going to care for our veterans, which we should, but we've not seen anything from a financial perspective. Where you're at, when are they going, you know, when do the shovels go in the ground? That's my big thing on the RDA.
As far as the shovel's going in the ground, we have to rely on this vote before we take it to the next level. We're already running some engineering on the background that we possibly can, but there's a certain amount of things that we have to wait on until we get the vote to trigger that. We do have enough financing in order to start the, I shouldn't say start the first phase, but pretty much complete the first phase. So that already gives us sustainability, you know, in our operating budget to, you know, for the rents that we're going to generate, you know, for our expenses. If we keep going at that rate, we'll be self-sustainable within a year.
With $750 a month?
It's actually 900, yep. But it was 750, we raised it up, the fair market rent, everything went up this past year, so we're just trying to ride along with that, as far as, and also with our HUDVAS vouchers. We have to kind of figure what that all works on.
Okay, so, we're talking about homeless veterans. How are they going to pay $900?
Well, the homeless veterans are going to be under, there'll be eight of them under HUDVAS vouchers. So when they come into the program, we apply, if they meet all the credentials, they apply for a HUDVAS voucher. That will not only give them case management, you know, talking about the clinical part of it, it'll also give them up to 70% of their rent that would be subsidized.
Okay, but that's assuming they meet the requirements?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Alder Prophet?
I just want to circle back for a few things, but first, I just want to thank you and Gail for taking the time to meet extensively with me and bringing the full binder and answering all my questions. I really appreciate you both taking the time to do that, so I could get my questions answered. Want to circle back to the 24-hour onsite. When we had bet, you both took the time to speak pretty extensively about what your intake process would be for these veterans. So could you just, I know it was included in the Plan Commission agenda, but could you talk us through the intake process for these veterans? Like, if someone comes in and is experiencing, you know, substance issues, alcohol issues, PTSD, with there not being 24-hour onsite staff, would those individuals be automatically accepted?
Not automatically, no. They would have to, we would have to really vet them out to see where they're at in life, to see if we can get them the resources, to see if they're going to fit into that program at all. I don't know if to pack and address it, but, you know, we're going to be talking about, you know, any felons would have to have at least a five-year gap in any kind of convictions. You know, misdemeanor would be three years, sex offenders would be not allowed. So there's a lot of restrictions that we have going into it. And I think as far as going back to the security, I think if there's anybody that we have even a problem with, we wouldn't be able to put them in the program. And, I mean, it gets back to security. I think we are going to have, we're going to have security cameras 24/7, we are going to be onsite, we do have part-time staff onsite, as well as the squad leaders, which we're going to be relying on, as far as them to know who to contact and when.
And the other thing I wanted to circle back to, I know you mentioned at the beginning of your testimony, the exclusivity portion, and that the county and the sale of the land was pretty strict on that. I do believe we have legal that was weighing in on that, and that's why that verbiage was changed. But to just address some of the concerns we may have heard, could you tell me how many veterans currently are on your board?
Seven.
Seven. So with the verbiage not being exclusivity, would it be safe to assume still that your board would very strongly lean in support of this housing going towards veterans with the fact that there are seven on your board?
That's been our mission all along. It's never been, there's never been a question about allowing anybody other than veterans in it. And so that's why I, I guess I wasn't real aware of how detrimental the word preferred was going to be to this, but the county is very adamant about this, so. Like I said, I'm not sure how, just going neutral with veterans, I think that might really be pretty detrimental to us.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Alder Grant, then Johnson, then Hutchison.
Thank you, and I also appreciate you guys meeting with me as well. Just a question, you referred to the two part-time staff. Are either of them licensed to deal with mental health or substance abuse? Okay. Okay. Because again, with the intake form, you know, asking the questions, it does, would you guys consider having someone onsite that's licensed?
From sustainability fact, I don't think we could. I think it's more of then reaching out to the VA clinic and some of the other, like community shelter in town, to see what resources we can get them or who we can direct them to.
Have you had any communication with the VA at all about what they could commit to?
Yes, we're working very closely with the VA.
Okay, okay, perfect, thank you.
Alder Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, the point was raised earlier about how sort of you had reacted, your team had reacted to the lack of leadership around the organization by bringing in new people. Could you just speak a little bit maybe to your structure, how many people are on your board? Do they have fiduciary responsibility?
Sure. Yeah, we now have 13 members on our board. Most of those board members have come to us knowing that we were getting a little bit of pressure because we didn't have a lot of board experience, so they actually approached us and said, can we do this for you? The board members that we've accumulated are, their strength is just crazily great. I mean, we have, you know, Jim Strong talked earlier, he was part of the reason that Veterans Village in Appleton started. He knows all the ins and outs of what's best for the veterans, what's best for the community. Tom Olson's here, he stepped on board, you know, he's been, he calls himself a recovering lawyer, but he's been very instrumental in bringing all of that board knowledge to us. And between the other ones that have came along with us, it's just phenomenal what insight they bring us. If we did have any voids in our board or in our structure, we surely don't know. I mean, and the passion that they have, being the fact that they came to us and said we want to be part of this, the passion, we just can't stop it. It's just been incredible.
So you reacted to a concern?
Yes.
And folks, you know, kind of filled that void. And again, I just want to go back to, I assume you've adopted bylaws and the board does have fiduciary responsibility?
Yes.
So really, at the end of the day, decisions are made by the board, directions are given by the board, you react, right, as staff, I presume, to whatever the board directs?
Correct.
Okay.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Hutchison.
Thank you. I just want to point out some of the conditions that are part of this PUD. Number four, is that the discretion of the common council or the Director of Community and Economic Development? Or a review by the Plan Commission may be required to ensure compliance with this planned unit development, and identify any areas of concern, including but not limited to, A, police calls and other documented safety concerns, and then B, inadequate facilities. So there is going to be some review by city officials of what's going on. Now, it's my understanding, this is a phased approach, there's five or seven units going up, then there's a couple more, and then the full units, and each phase is about a year, if I'm understanding correctly.
You're correct.
Okay, so there would be plenty of time to review issues after a year, say, and make judgments as to how well it's going. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. Then also, the last two, professional archaeologists onsite during excavation and grading, that was put in at Plan Commission based on comments received. Now, I know there's a desire not to have that by the applicants, because it's time and money and potentially holdup, but that's still part of this PUD, to make sure that we're not digging up human remains and just going on. We'll identify if a bone is encountered, if it's animal or human. But like you said, well, like it's been said, there's drawings and figures and photographs of where this development is going to occur, and there's been a lot of excavation and construction already. So, but, we have, an archaeologist is planning on being there, and the seventh one is provide staff with a report on location and development effects of dry creek bed at time of permitting. And what that's meant to do is, the dry creek bed's going to be identified during permitting, and that's going to have to be dealt with, meaning if there's surface water during precipitation events, it's got to be kept onsite and not make it to that creek bed. So I just want to bring that up, that these things were brought up, but they were dealt with in this PUD. So that's what I wanted to say. So thanks for your patience.
Any other, any folks who haven't spoken yet, any questions? Alder Presley, and then Alder Grant.
Somebody brought up the coal ash environmental concern. Are you looking into that? Have you looked into that?
Yeah, we checked with the city staff on that, and we won't need a Phase 1 environmental study on that. As Jonathan alluded to before, every, just about every square inch of our property has been excavated and paved, and there's been, you know, buildings on everything, so I don't foresee that as being an issue.
And a second question, because it seems like there's some confusion about what your mission is. Are you primarily trying to provide housing for veterans, and you also have supplemental services or referral to services? Or are you primarily providing services and housing is just an addition of that?
It kind of really goes hand in hand. I mean, without secure housing, we're not going to be able to get them off base, so the housing has to come first. You get them a safe, secure spot to call home, and then surround them with the services. Surround them with, you know, our staff, with our board members, and then try to get them directed to the services. So I think it kind of goes hand in hand. I wouldn't put one above the other.
Thank you. Alder Grant.
Apologize, just a follow-up question, Alder Johnson's question about the board members. Are all 13 members voting members?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, sir, for your testimony and for your work. Anyone else who'd like to speak? Feel free to come forward, and if folks who would also like to speak want to queue up behind our speaker, that would help kind of accelerate things a little bit. Go ahead, sir.
Ron Umentum, 4625 Game Lane, Denmark, Wisconsin. I've heard the pros and cons this evening of for and against this project. We're talking about affordable housing for veterans. You talked tonight about affordable housing right downtown Green Bay. But affordable housing for veterans, is there medical staff onsite? I asked the same question, if you have affordable housing downtown, is there medical staff onsite? Is there full-time security onsite? You're asking this of the providers by the veterans. How do you know that a veteran doesn't have PTSD, isn't alcoholic, or is in mental, have mental illness, who are coming downtown to live in this affordable housing, the same thing that we're trying to do? I've heard of all the contaminants on the site. At the Plan Board End Meeting, I spoke, one person said, what if my dog don't like one of the veterans and he bites the dog, or bites the veteran? Because we walk on the site, we walk our dog on the site, and of course, the comment was, it's private property, you shouldn't be there. But we heard these, the big thing is, it's not in my backyard. And I think the restrictions that are being put on it is not being put on fairly by everybody else. I think just because they're called veterans and they're homeless, we look at them in a different light. We need to look at them as a citizen of this community, the same way you're trying to put them downtown Green Bay. This site, I encourage you, everybody to walk this site, I walked this site. That institute was built there, I believe, and that land was purchased by the county in 1859. There was a mental health building there. That's, I don't think they buried the bodies in the basement. They buried the bodies in the yard. They've had, there are studies done showing where those buildings are. There's locations where the, about where the bodies were buried, there was excavations that were made, and you continue to ask questions on what restrictions can we put on this property? An archaeologist would be fine, I don't have any problem with that. But when they're coming, I think the buildings are 400 feet off the road. Do we want to spend $100,000 to have somebody watch there? Or the city will require, when the improvements go in, you have an inspector on the job. So this means we have to have two people on the job inspecting and paying. Now, I'm familiar with what it costs for these type of inspectors. I asked the board to treat this project just like you're treating the project downtown. What the veterans pays and how they pay that amount, and if they qualify, yes, I think it's an important issue, and it were very, very good questions asked. But again, I support this issue, and I hope that the council can approve of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? All right, thanks for your service and testimony.
Good evening. My name's Tom Olson, and I'm the President/CEO of Cornerstone Foundation of Northeastern Wisconsin. A little bit of background, I'm a product of Green Bay Public Schools, graduate of West High School.
Just looking for your address as well.
Oh, 3477 Highland Center Drive. Product of public high school, West High School, went to University of Wisconsin-Madison Law School, practiced law for 11 years, had a nice opportunity, became President/CEO of US Paper Mills, left my practice, that's why I was referred to as a recovering attorney. I haven't practiced in 37 years. How I became involved in this initially was, a grant request was made to the Cornerstone Foundation last year. We approved that request, and we're very impressed. In fact, we have a dinner after our meetings, two granting meetings a year, and after our meeting, we talked around the dinner table about, well, what grant did you feel best that we gave today? And most of the people there pointed out the Veterans First project. And part of that was because of the work that went into all of the different organizations, including labor unions, including project managers, including counselors, including all kinds of folks that they have enlisted that are going to help them with this project. Couple months ago, got a letter from somebody in Schmidt Park that caused myself and our executive director, Sherry Prosser, to bring in Kim and Gail and find out more what's going on with the project. We did that twice, we brought them in, and each time, we became still impressed with what this project is all about. And I think there was some unfair attacks on Gail. Quite frankly, this is her baby, along with Kim, and I thought that, when I looked at everything that she's done, getting certificate, peer counseling, and then putting it to work at the Gathering House, getting a substance abuse counselor in training certificate, putting that to use, so she can gain some experience, not that she's going to be a counselor, but more information for helping veterans and working with those kinds of people that will be helping them. working with those kinds of people that will be helping them. What came up, a letter from the Homeowners Association was a lot of attacks about the board, that a couple of people had left. And one of them that left was, talked about as if his only construction project was a pet small house or cemetery. Reality of it is, is if you go up to Stone Harbor in Sturgeon Bay, that's his project. The center that's there with it, that's his project. He's done all kinds of apartment buildings around the city and the area. And the reason why he withdrew from the board is because he's in Florida for the better part of the year and just didn't feel he had the time. So in any event, in the letter from Homeowners Association, they brought up that they didn't have an experienced board. So in any event, we took a look around and thought, well, we want some strong veteran presence. We already had some strong veteran presence. Gail, John Davis, others. But we recruited some. And Dan Ammerman, who's a Major General, retired. And he's on board. He's also very active, as is Jim Strong, in Military Officers Association of Northeastern Wisconsin. Jim Strong, by the way, was the first president of the Veterans Village in Appleton.
Sir, your three minutes-
They don't have 24/7.
Your three minutes have expired, so we just want to kind of wrap things up a little bit?
Sure. Point of the matter is, is we brought on some good experience, both from military standpoint. I've been on countless boards, whether they're for profit, nonprofit, foundations, educational. Brought on some other people, Tom Oliniechek, who's a practicing attorney, has probably been on more boards than I have. We brought on Tim Day, who's a former CFO for American Medical Security Insurance Company. Brought on Tim Jorgensen from Associated Bank Commercial Lender. Brought on our retiring Executive Director for Cornerstone, Sherry Prosser, who was a key player for the homeless shelter, new community shelter. And a few others. But in any event, we intend to make sure this is going to be a successful project. And we're going to be there for them, we'll be helping them, we'll be working with them. And I think that this is something that the community needs and we're going to provide it.
Okay, thanks so much for your testimony. Questions for our guests? Maybe kind of an obvious one, but I'll ask a question. How do you feel about your name being associated with this development or the name of the Cornerstone Foundation?
I feel good about it. I think it's a good project. As I said before, our Cornerstone Foundation Board thought it was a very good project. And we're looking for it to be very successful.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Katrina Herman. My address is 1019 St. Lawrence Drive. I'm a resident of Schmidt Park as of four years ago. I am originally from Green Bay. My specialty is in medicine, specifically COVID care in the acute setting. Also, I have degrees that surround mental health and trauma care. So, but the reason I'm here tonight is to tell you a story about an adventure I had with my 13-year-old daughter. So, living in Schmidt Park, there's a big banner, when you turn the corner onto St. Anthony Drive, that says, "Save the Poor Farm." And we drive past it, we drive past it day after day. And my daughter said, "Mom, what's a poor farm?" And I said, "I don't know." So we looked it up and we started investigating. And it was probably the closest I've been to my child since before COVID. It felt really good. We learned about how, when someone doesn't have enough funds, when they are down and out on their luck, if they have any issues back in the 1850s, they went to a facility where they were able to live, exist, and work. And then that was also located behind what we are talking about here. So, the Mental Health Center, which originally the asylum, which was built 30 years after the poor farm, that is where we had the populace from, those 11 different counties came. And we've supported that as Brown County, but also the city has residents up until 2009, when they took that down. Where that building stood is, I believe, what we're talking about here. And my concern is that the residents that had passed while at the facility, the Brown County Mental Health Institute, which is where I volunteered when I was in school, I got to hear the employees in the kitchen and they'd laugh. There was this big, what I thought was a furnace by this big water tower. Now, if you look, there was actually, you know, a summer kitchen. But we always said, "Ooh, I bet that's where all the bodies are." And one person working, I'll never forget it, said, "No, we don't put them in the furnace, they're buried in the hill back there." Which is south, or I'm sorry, north of where we're talking about. So I don't know that, all the reports we're using, you know, 1991, we're using speculation from a vocal perspective. We weren't doing, in that case, what we're all talking about here, which is core samples. They did the core sampling in which they found, you know, human remains, they found wood fragments. The coolest part of this, I feel, is that my child and I were able to go to the Brown County Library. We looked at microfiche. I don't know how many people have used microfiche lately, but it was so cool to share this with a 13-year-old who said, "Mom, wow, they're talking about the poor farm and the cost of nails to the city to bury these people." She said, "Why don't we know where they are?" And over time, as a society, we have a tendency to keep moving towards progress. We need progress, we need to take care of each other. That is our goal. My concern is that perhaps we're doing this hastily.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Three minutes.
My ask is that we use the Environmental Protection Agency grant that was afforded to us to further explore this area of land and make sure that there is no question that there are no human remains and that we are not putting our environment at risk by doing any kind of excavating.
Okay, thanks for your testimony. Any questions? All right, thanks again.
I live on Forest Hill Drive in Schmidt Park. I'm a member of the SPUR organization and I oppose, I'm opposed to Kim and Gail's project. I'd like to address the study that was admitted to the city by Veterans First, which implies that crime does not increase and property values do not decrease in neighborhoods near affordable housing or homeless villages, like the one proposed for Schmidt Park. Veterans First claim is not necessarily true. The vast majority of tiny home villages or affordable housing projects are constructed in lower-income, higher-crime neighborhoods, as shown on the posted board. All of these around here are villages, this is Schmidt Park. There's, so, when a facility goes into a neighborhood like this, they bring homeless off the street? Sure. It's a reasonable expectation to see crime go down and property values stay the same. However, there's been very little study done on the impact of affordable housing on higher-income neighborhoods consisting of single-family dwellings. In fact, one of the studies submitted by the NORs states, "Development in higher-income areas are associated with house price decreases." An NIH study titled, "Do Affordable Housing Projects Harm Suburban Communities?" concludes that careful property management, aesthetic consistency with the local architecture, spatial congruency with the surrounding neighborhood, and a cultivation of high social control were important in mitigating the potential negative impacts on surrounding neighborhoods. The same study cites other studies that show poorly managed affordable housing projects can significantly impact a neighborhood. Examples such as Lipton Springs in Seattle, Rathke Terrace in Madison, Tree Lane in Madison, Compass Point in Asheville, North Carolina, all highlight these risks. The surrounding neighborhood experienced a significant increase in crime, including break-ins, assaults, and in some cases even homicides. In addition, these other studies showed an increase in crime and decreased property values when affordable housing projects are concentrated in a given area. And this validates the concerns of the Schmidt Park residents, that there's another affordable housing project going into our neighborhood, concentrated in our neighborhood. So the question becomes, does Veterans First have the qualifications? And a reasonable plan such that Schmidt Park will not negatively be affected, we at SPUR feel the answer is no. As previously pointed out, they do not have the qualifications for this. Regarding aesthetic consistency with local architecture and spatial congruency, we feel that the proposed affordable housing project is not even close to the single-family residents. Veterans First plan for social control is distressing. The plan states 24/7 coverage, it's not. The residents monitoring themselves between 5:00 PM and 8:00 AM seems naive at best. Gail and Kim NORs state that they would be on site within 20 minutes. This is far too slow of a response time. Even if Gail and Kim were on site 24/7, are they qualified to de-escalate a potentially dangerous situation? Part of Veterans First plan is to use the services provided by the Brown County Treatment Center. Does the Treatment Center have the capacity to take on the additional patients that the NORs plan to recruit from a 17-county area? Do we have this, can we take these services on? And lastly, the residents of Schmidt Park do not trust Veterans First in being capable to successfully manage its project in our safe and quiet neighborhood. Who's accountable if things go awry?
Sir, your three minutes-
The NORs? No. Can I wrap this up?
Yeah.
The NORs, no. They won't be accountable. The county? No, they won't be accountable. The city council, sorry, which you won't be accountable. Mr. Mayor, you won't be accountable for this. The answer is, no one will be accountable if things go wrong. Thank you.
Any questions for our guests?
Mr. Mayor.
Alder Johnson.
I had asked the question about the board in particular, and whether or not they have fiduciary responsibility. And the reason I ask that question is because that does make the board accountable, given the names that were shared. Maybe you know them, maybe not. But do you feel like-
We haven't seen that. Have you read the plan? It's incredibly simplistic. If I submitted something to this for the company I work for, they would say, they would send me away. Come back when you have data. There's nothing in here but thoughts and it's a nice dream, but there's nothing backing it up and there's no concrete plan on making this successful. And that's what we're concerned about. We're not concerned about having more vets in our neighborhood, but we are concerned about an organization that does not have a good plan to execute this.
Okay, and I appreciate that. But I'll go back to my question, which was, we have a board that has accountability based on their structure.
Sure.
Does that give you any kind of assurance at all?
No, it doesn't. This board just came prior to, what, a month ago? All these people joined the board?
Be that as it may, it's still a board that exists.
It doesn't suggest to me continuity or sustainability. It appears to me, hey, this makes it look good. So let's bring in some more board members. That's what it appears like to us.
Okay.
So anyways, that's my position and-
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. One question.
There is included in the PUD. Number three says, "If the social and support services are discontinued, the managed operation is dissolved, or if Veterans First of N E W no longer manages the development, the managed social and support service uses shall terminate immediately. The managed social and support service uses slash operations shall not be renewed or reestablished without the Plan Commission and City Council review and approval." Does that feel like an extra layer of accountability?
So what does it mean if it fails? What are you guys going to do with this? Let's say it goes to all 21 buildings, you have 21 little buildings here. What are you going to do about it?
I-
Who's going to go in those buildings?
Yeah, I believe the city has a plan in place for that. That was spoken about at the Plan Commission.
What's the plan? If this thing goes belly up, what's the plan? Who occupies these homes? I mean, these folks are, no offense, but I'm up there too. But Kim is 65 and Gail is approaching 60. I mean, how long, how much longer are they going to be able to run this? What's the, what happens next? What's the, you know, what's the plan to beyond Kim and Gail?
And if those answers were supplied to you, would you be in favor of the project?
I would be in favor of the project if I could see a plan that was concrete and not full of wishful thinking.
Have you reached out to the NORs to review their plan?
I have, I've read what's online. I've read what the city's put out online.
Okay.
And it's pretty simple.
Okay. I would encourage you to sit down.
Now, we haven't seen the fiduciary part of this.
Okay, I would encourage you-
That hasn't been shared with anybody. So what's going on with that?
Okay.
Where is that money going?
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Presley, Alder Presley.
Just because you mentioned this first, how much of your concern is rooted in safety for your neighborhood and property values for your neighborhood?
Quite a bit, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, it is, of course I'm concerned about this. Wouldn't you be? I put, you know, I pay $6,000 a year in taxes to this city. High rate of tax compared to all these other people who are here talking about and supporting this. None of them are from the city of Green Bay. None of them pay our high tax rates. I do. My neighbors do. So quite frankly, I'm sick of hearing all these people that aren't even from the community coming up and supporting us. We're the ones that are going to be affected by this, not them.
All right. Anything else? Any questions?
Keep in mind, none of these, there's no, all these guys here-
Sir, sir.
Are the, none of them are-
Appreciate your testimony.
All right, let's move on.
Hi, I'm Michelle Yertson. I live at 3117 Bayview Drive, that's in Schmidt Park. And I'm opposed to this, but not for, not necessarily for property or whatever. There's so many red flags that have me concerned. And I think the city needs to do more, they need to do their due diligence. If I handed in a plan like Veterans First did at work, it would be turned down immediately. There isn't enough data, there isn't a business plan. I'd like to see a five-year plan, not whatever's out there right now. And I just don't think that this is the right project. My dad's a veteran, so don't go there. I thank you all for your service. We need veterans services. We need housing for veterans, but this isn't it. This is not enough support. And I lived in Madison, we just moved back here for about three years ago. I worked with the homeless population, I worked with homeless veterans. And you need a lot of support if you're going to be successful in providing housing and other services. This doesn't provide that. You need 24-hour help. You need someone there to help someone who's having a PTSD moment or whatever. I mean, you need skilled people for that. So we, it's just too little. I think the city council really needs to do their due diligence, step back and do a little more research on this. Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions? All right, thank you, ma'am.
My name is Jason Scompers. I'm a resident of Schmidt Park and live at 1006 Mount Mary Drive. I am a member of the Schmidt Park United Residents Group and I strongly oppose this project. The Schmidt Park Widely Circulated Petition has revealed that 94.7% of our residents are opposed to the Vets First Tiny Home Development petition to be constructed in Schmidt Park. The petition results were calculated using the Cochrane formula and yielded a 95% confidence level. I'd like to describe to the members of the Common Council and those of the community how this was computed and why it represents those that will be impacted most by this project. In design of experiments, a population of study is selected. For example, the population of Schmidt Park can be described as a resident mailing addresses enclosed by Highway 43, St. Anthony Drive, Bayview Drive, and Humboldt Road. Using the Mail Dog Retriever app on the Brown County GIS website, 633 mailing addresses were obtained, as can be seen, highlighted on the provided map. The addresses were placed on a spreadsheet where the signature collectors had access. It was then noted if the resident was in support of the project, opposed to the project, or unaware, undecided on the project. For those that were not home, a flyer was left on the property listing our concerns with an option to sign the petition online. The Cochrane formula gives us the number of necessary samples needed to meet the desired statistical constraints. For this study, a confidence level of 95% and margin of error of 5% was selected. Our population of 633 mailing addresses resulted in a sample size minimum of 278. Our team reached out to 337 homes. The findings as of April 22nd are as follows. The total signatures of those opposed to the project is 180. This includes 21 signatures from residents of Veterans Manor, reinforcing opposition is not anti-veterans. Homes that would not sign and verbally stated that they were in favor of Vets First was 10. Homes that were undecided on the issue was 30. The remaining homes, as stated, were given a flyer to sign later if desired. Forty signatures came from our online efforts. So when you exclude the undecided residents- So when you exclude the undecided residents, the sample proportion of opposition was found to be ninety-four point seven percent. Therefore, we are ninety-five percent confident that the true opposition of Vets First among residents in Schmidt Park is between eighty-nine point seven and ninety-nine point seven percent. Thank you.
Thanks for your testimony. Questions? Alder Hutchinson, then Alder Presley.
Thank you. In the statistics lesson, but the questionnaire, was it just simply, are you in favor, are you against? Or was there any verbiage along with it?
The flyer that was left?
Anything, anything that someone voted on. Was it simply, are you in favor? Are you against? Are you indifferent? Or you don't know? Was that the extent of the text that you gave people to sign?
So the, the petition itself was provided some main points of our concern.
What did the main points consist of?
The main point, there was seven of them. It was the Board of Directors qualifications. The, the development may pose unnecessary safety risks to Schmidt Park residents and the tiny home village veterans. The location presents a high likelihood of underground historical artifacts and human remains due to the proximity of former asylum and Porfarne Cemetery location. Unresolved environmental and health concerns include the Dry Creek bed and suspected coal ash deposits on site. Veterans Manor residents has reported that this development will have an adverse impact on their quality of life. Now, I personally was one of the four members collecting signatures. I approached everyone with, are you aware of the tiny home project that is being proposed in our neighborhood? And then that way, it would eliminate any biases of I am in support. And if they said no, then that was noted.
Right.
If they were, said, I oppose the project, I then presented the signature petition.
Okay. So, but the, the position itself was extremely biased. You were giving one side of a story. I mean, you didn't give any side for, for the development. It doesn't sound like. So you're giving out a petition that'd be signed that's highly tilted one way, and you have this huge amount that agree with it. I, I see that, that the questions you asked invalidate your questionnaire. If it would have been a simple before, against, whatever, and if they had questions, you could answer them, but the way you presented it almost guaranteed you were gonna have a high rate against it.
I would like to clarify and respectfully disagree with that. We started, we didn't knock on a door and shove a piece of paper in someone's face. Now, we started and we asked, are you aware of the project? Are you opposed? And if somebody says, no, I'm not aware, say, well, could you please, do you have a position on it? So that is not providing them with biased information. Now, I will agree with you on the fact that if somebody wasn't there, the document that was provided was filled with our concerns. It wasn't filled with support. However, if you eliminate all of the online options, it still revealed a ninety-three point three percent. So ninety-three point three percent are opposed that were approached with the question of, are you aware of the project? Are you in support? Or do you oppose?
And that's it? That's all they heard when they answered?
We had four people that did it, and that was the way that we had decided. I cannot guarantee that all of us did that every single time.
Okay. Well, I, I just, I understand the statistical trying to determine the percentage of people against it. I just have a question as to how neutral it was when it was presented. That's all.
So can I ask, how would, how would it be presented in a neutral way other than approaching it with, do you, are you aware? Do you have a question?
Appreciate the question, but we don't do sort of a back and forth in that regard. So if you could wrap things up, Alder?
Okay. Well, I wasn't tasked with giving that, but if I was gonna give something out that I wanted a neutral thing, I would maybe give two for, two against. Here it is. You know, not this big list of against. Okay? That's all.
Thank you for your input. Alder Presley?
Alder Hutchinson talked about a lot of my concerns. But, so are you saying that with this survey, you had two different modes for finishing the survey or completing the survey with two different sets of information available? Either the in-person or the online, and you considered those both as part of the same survey?
So the, the survey was approached with, as I stated, with the question of, are you aware of the project? And then if they were opposed, we say, well, that's great. I have a petition here that you can sign to oppose the project. The, the, the document that was left on those that were not home is not the same document that they would sign, because then I'd be giving, I wouldn't be able to collect those signatures. Which is why I stated the difference of the online petitions versus the ones that were collected. So forty of them were collected online and a hundred and forty were collected in person. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. I just want, like, what is your background in doing polls like this? Because it doesn't seem to be, I have a little bit of a background in this sort of analysis, and I, it doesn't seem to be in line with accepted practices.
Okay. I graduated in twenty nineteen from the University of Wisconsin-Platteville with high honors and a bachelor's degree of mechanical engineering and a minor in mathematics. Now, any statistical study or polling, you can look back and say, boy, if we could do this over again, we would have added a thing here or there to ensure the independence, mutually exclusive, and all of the other assumptions. So that, that's my background.
Well, I'll just, yeah, no more back and forth, but I have a background, a master's degree in communication and this sort of sampling, and I think that you have not followed the right practices for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Alder Prof.
I was just, I'm not familiar. I don't have a background in statistics, so I just wanted to follow up. I was jotting down some numbers as you were listing them. You mentioned six hundred and thirty-three addresses. So you said with your method, you would need two hundred and seventy-eight to get a sample? Is that correct?
Correct.
And you said you had a hundred and eighty opposed, thirty that didn't give an answer, and ten that were in favor. Again, not a mathematician, but I count that as two hundred and twenty responses, which is not two hundred and seventy-eight to properly calculate that sample size. Am I correct, or am I miscalculating?
It's, no, you, you are correct in the fact that the people that we had talked to did not meet the sample size. But there were, the, the remaining homes that were left flyers was considered part of that. The sample was selected is to be a mailing address, and a success is knocking on the door and either talking to somebody or leaving a flyer.
So would you say that getting two hundred and twenty responses is not the two hundred and seventy-eight, and therefore that percentage is flawed?
We don't know of the homes that were left a flyer, how many of them had read the information and discarded it. So there is no way to accurately say whether or not that your claim of not meeting that is correct. Because of the flyers that was left, we do know that they were read, because we had forty of them sign online.
Okay. But you did not achieve two hundred and seventy-eight. Is that correct? Whether it was read or not, you did not receive two hundred and seventy-eight responses. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Thanks a lot.
Hi, my name is Dawn Scompers. I live at one zero zero six Mount Mary Drive. I'm a member of Schmidt Park United Residents, and I oppose this project. Before I get into my spiel, I would just like to say that Veterans First also did a petition, and they had five signatures of support for Schmidt Park, one for Veterans Manor, and we had twenty. And I am just wondering, did they present our side and our views when they delivered their petition? Did you? I'm curious. And was their petition subject to the same kind of scrutiny as our petition? I doubt that they brought up all the concerns that we have in their petition when they asked somebody to sign it. We could ask the people at Veterans Manor when she brought in pizza after hours if she presented our position. That's all I have to say about that. In May nineteen ninety-one, the State Historical Society of the Wisconsin Highway Archaeology Program conducted a study, which is Appendix A Report of Study, to locate the pre-nineteen thirty-one Brown County Mental Health Cemetery located somewhere on the property. The sole purpose of this study was to determine whether the cemetery, which was abandoned sixty years previous and its location lost to memory, would interfere with the plans to reconstruct State Highway fifty-four from County A to State Highway fifty-seven. Following this study, the report concluded that the Brown County Cemetery was far enough away as to not interfere with construction. Having accomplished their sole purpose, their search for the size, range, or extent of the burial area was neither investigated nor determined. About three years prior to the nineteen ninety-one study and during the construction of a small path near the mental health center water tower, it was thought that this discovery may have uncovered the forgotten cemetery as they discovered several large bone fragments. As noted in the State Historical Society of Wisconsin Highway Archaeology Program, this led to a systematic subsurface investigation in that area, which is labeled B. The investigation found only eleven scattered bodies in that large area, and those eleven bodies were reburied to a different area, C, south of Area A, so that construction on the path could continue. C Attachment Two, Area C relocated burials. So here we have the map. This is the proposed Veterans First property. This here is B, which is the old water tower where eleven bodies were found. Those bodies were moved here to C. This is Area A, where they went searching to find where the Porfarne Cemetery was when they were doing the highway construction. They did some probing in A, and they did find remains, and they said, yeah, this is probably where the cemetery is. It's far enough away from the highway construction. We don't have to worry about it. End of search. They did no further investigation to find out the size, range, and extent of A, and this is the closest one to the property to find. It's estimated there are eight hundred and three individuals that are buried somewhere on this property. Do you really think that all eight hundred and three bodies are contained in this little area without any ground penetrating radar, which was done on B and C, but none was done on A? So it doesn't just conveniently work out, this is not a survey area here, the square, it doesn't just work out conveniently for Veterans First that A stops here. We don't know. There's never been any test. Even the state archaeologists said, I agree that a full investigation of the site is warranted to avoid future trauma to the site and those with interest in it. Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions? Alder, where?
I appreciate you coming, along with everybody else. It's warm and you're patient, so thank you. The eight hundred and three burials, where did you come about that? I've read and heard ninety-nine hundreds, eight hundred and three. I've seen the gamut.
Sure. So that is an estimate. It is from the annual reports in nineteen twenty-nine, where the average death rate there was eleven a year, times seventy-three years that they operated.
And what report was that from?
It was in annual reports from the archives.
Oh, I see. All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Anything else? All right. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having us. I'm Diane Dohmler. I reside at three zero one five Bayview Drive, and my property falls within the four hundred foot border. And I'm speaking with others regarding the Schmidt Park United Residents Group and regarding the Vets One Preferred Proposal, of which I am opposed. We know that you're all busy and you have a lot of documentation to read, so this is an excerpt from the documents that were provided for you. The Wisconsin State Historical Society Highway Archaeology Program Study Group of nineteen ninety-one next targeted an area to the east where an employee informant thought that the burial site may be found somewhere near the former manure pile of this historic site. Using ground probes, they discovered what they suspected were several buried bodies in the area. In your group, in your packet, you'll see it marked A on the attachment. In twenty sixteen, the Neville Public Museum of Brown County conducted a ground penetrating radar survey in a two-grid area containing most, but not all, of the areas B and C, and there were no probes done in Area A, which is adjacent to the property being discussed. That ground penetrating radar survey grid area is contained within the burial site protected area, or what is also known as the non-disturbed area, as currently referred to by the State Historical Society. It measures an approximate area of one hundred and ninety feet north, south, and two hundred and thirty-five feet east and west. So the nebulous of this is what is generating a lot of this discussion. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks for your testimony. Questions? All right.
My name is Walter Dohmler. I live at thirty fifteen Bayview Drive with this lovely woman right here. I represent, of course, the Schmidt Neighborhood Association. And with some of the evidence or documentation I'd like to present, really points out that this whole plan is really close, very, very close, to this so-called, excuse me, protected area, shall I say. And let me go ahead and prove this. The Wisconsin Historical Society Highway Archaeology Program Study Report is replete with imprecise terminology, such as assumed, in the vicinity of, approximate, secondhand, and possibly even extended further. Those were quotes. Those qualifying, limiting words can considerably compromise any intended or assumed accuracy in locating unmarked burial bodies. That loose language was acceptable for the State Historical Society of Wisconsin Highway Archaeological Program's sole purpose, which was simply locating the cemetery, but certainly not acceptable for the purpose of precise defining the statutory burial site non-disturbed boundaries. That map is additionally inaccurate, because it labels Preferred Vets One parcel with an approx. one hundred and seventy-three feet, although the actual width exactly two feet wider. That is why there may appear to be some space between the Preferred Vets One parcel and the burial site protected area, but there is not. In reality, the Preferred Vets One parcel already intrudes onto the burial site protected area by about ten feet. Quoting the Neville Public Museum of Brown County Grounds penetrating radar survey report recommendations, and based on the ground penetrating radar data and historical documentation and state burial regulations, a fifteen-foot buffer zone around the periphery of the recorded cemetery site is advised. While this is a guiding guideline for ensuring that no human remains are impacted due to future development on this site. Quote, "It cannot be guaranteed that historical records and the ground penetrating radio survey data presented here are a hundred percent conclusive," unquote. Therefore, the Preferred Vets One petition parcel actually intrudes about fifteen feet onto the burial site protected area.
Sir, your, your three minutes have expired?
Not about ten feet, as they say.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thanks a lot.
May I take just, may I take one sec? Just one minute?
No.
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 Thank you.
We're done, but thanks for the testimony.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Hello. Thanks for the time. My name is Robert Fish. I am a resident of Schmidt Park. I'm a member of the Schmidt Park United Residents. I live at nine ten Mount Mary Drive in Green Bay. I'm hot and sweaty. Whoa. But I gotta say that I couldn't be more proud to stand here with this fine group of people that I have gotten to know in my neighborhood because of this. I'm certainly not anti-veteran, but I do oppose this project for all of the reasons that we have heard before, but particularly because I want to protect this beautiful green space and this historical landmark that we should be honoring instead of developing. A look at the Neville Public Museum of Brown County Ground Penetrating Radar Survey, which is Figure Ten, the depth map, depth map, one hundred centimeter grid, and note the haphazard clustering of bodies within. Then note in the lower-left corner of Grid Two- Then note in the lower-left corner of Grid 2 how some of those clustered body images indicate that the amoeba-shaped clusters extend outside the view of the grid's perfectly straight corner boundaries. They're all over. The widely scattered pattern of bodies located at B indicates that the entire area surrounding the water tower area is highly likely to contain additional bodies. These anomalies conclusively indicate that the actual burial site extends beyond the grid boundaries. It should have already been scanned by ground penetrating radar, but was not. Chapter 157, Subchapter 3, Burial Sites Preservation, Wisconsin State Statutes 157.70, Subsection 2R, Site Disturbance Prohibited states that no person may intentionally cause or permit the disturbance of a burial site or a catalogued land which is contiguous to a catalogued burial site. As noted in the Neville Public Museum of Brown County Ground Penetrating Radar Survey at the Poor Farm Cemetery in Brown County, Wisconsin 47BR-0447 and BBR-0126, this site contains both catalogued and non-catalogued burial sites. The Neville Public Museum of Brown County Ground Penetrating Radar Survey stipulates several recommendations, including a 15-foot buffer zone around the catalogued burial site. Importantly, the Neville Public Museum of Brown County Ground Penetrating Radar Survey further notes that it cannot be guaranteed that the historical records and the ground penetrating radar survey data presented are 100% inclusive of all burials in that general area. Vets One has acknowledged that their petitioned 3.46-acre diagram southern boundary does in fact intrude on the catalogued burial site buffer zone by approximately 10 feet. Note the southerly-east to west dotted line. Vets One claims they will not build on that 10-foot-wide southern strip. However, their petition diagram shows two parking lot drainage spillways included, intruding into the burial site protected area buffer zone. Those runoff drainage spillways have the potential to erode the burial site protected area soil and thereby expose buried bodies. The Wisconsin State Historical Society has noted that there is a high likelihood of encountering both historical artifacts and burial sites within the southern boundary of the petitioned Vets One development.
Sir, three minutes?
Thank you.
Good timing. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Donna King. I live at 1220 St. Lawrence Drive, and I'm with the Schmidt Park United Residents. I want you to know that my grandpa, my father, my husband, and two uncles are all veterans, and my father was a total wreck when he came home. Okay, to the common council, and I, we do a lot with the manor, you know, the manor there. We go there. My husband goes there, plays with, we do a lot. Okay, we are, this is to the common council. We are David and Jill Bolinsky, and we reside at 2309 Haley Circle in Bellevue, Wisconsin. David and I wanted to tell you our story in person when you vote on the veterans' homes, but we cannot be there. We want to share our disappointment of and opposition to the veterans' plan. It does not belong near any gravesite or in a gravesite. I started contacting relatives to see if I could get any answers about our family history. Some had vague recollections of Grandma Mary. Okay, she there were, did it in whispers because she had a mental breakdown, and the family was too embarrassed at the time to even discuss this among themselves. She remained a mental case. Judge Hock gave us an order to get the records of Grandma Mary. Grandma Mary was of Germany descent. She was born in 1840. She and her husband Bert came to the United States in the 1860s. They settled in the town of Preble. Bert was a farmer, and Grandma Mary was making house. In 1869, Bert and Grandma started their family, and they had three girls. Okay, Bert and Grandma were living a dream life until 1878 on Christmas Day. Her daughters were nine, six, and three. Grandma Mary was committed to an insane asylum. She spent the rest of her life as inmate Tosh, which lasted until she was 85. She spent 70, 47 years there, and she was buried there. We are sad because we will never know exactly where. Grandpa Bert never remarried and raised the daughters and lived to be 87. Desecrating Grandma Mary and others would be terrible. We would be tormented because we would never know if they dug up Grandma Mary. Having someone there to watch out for bodies isn't any help. Grandma Mary and the entire family have suffered enough dark clouds. We don't have to share Grandma Mary's memory with hushed whispers anymore and embarrassment. Please help us and the other families and let them rest in peace. Thank you for listening to us. David and Jillian Bolinsky. Human decency and respect demand burial sites be protected. Also, yesterday, I was at Preble, I was at a high school, I shouldn't say the name, but anyway, I was there, and one of the kids in the special ed went totally berserk. But we had buttons, and we can, and there was a nurse that came, there were policemen that came, an admin came, and to, and these kids, when they get that way or lose it, they're very, very strong.
Ma'am, your three minutes?
And there were-
Your three minutes have expired?
Okay. So anyway, there was one teacher, two pairs-
Yeah. Any questions for our guest?
In two seconds.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
I spoke at the Plan Commission meeting on May 2nd regarding the Wisconsin statutes and Supreme Court decisions that strictly prohibit government land donations in this state. I've also mentioned the statutes that protect historic and archaeological sites for future generations. These statutes and rulings apply to the Brown County Mental Health acreage in question. I've emailed county officials regarding the apparent illegality of their land donation. I have contacted Brown County and Green Bay legal departments as well, seeking a conversation about this issue. To date, I have been ignored. You have to wonder why the lawyers won't simply tell me where my legal analysis is incorrect, so I can just drop this issue. Maybe they have no good argument. To those government employees who refuse to respond to me, I remind you, Wisconsin Constitution, Article 1, Section 4, "The right of the people, peaceably to assemble, to consult for the common good, to petition the government on any department thereof, shall never be abridged." A petition is a conversation with the government about the people's concerns. You're required to respond. Failure to respond is a willful breach of the responsibilities to the people and is an attack on the rights of the people. Anyway, today I remind the city council members that you're personally required to understand and abide by the state laws, just like the rest of us. I have emailed the mayor and every alder with my legal concerns for each of you to consider. If you rubber-stamp the development of this land and then it turns out that state laws have been violated, you're responsible for your own decision. Lastly, if we're going to help the veterans, let's do it legally. Thank you.
Thanks for your testimony. Any questions? Thank you, sir. And just sort of a public service announcement. Got an email from Chief Knott a few minutes ago, just notifying us as staff that we've got a severe storm that's coming in at 9:30-ish, 9:30 to 10:00. Looks like the worst of it, so just want everybody to be on notice, not tornado, but severe weather, so do with that what you will. All right. Thank you, sir.
I don't have statistics, but I'll be fast, okay? I'm Karen Store, 2794 Oakwood Drive, but my wellness center is on 2330 Meadow Park Drive in Bellevue. Well, anyway, I've been doing this for 13 years. I just want to say I speak from my heart. I've been working with veterans for 13 years, that whole time. They come to our place, we don't charge them, we work with them, and if we can actually start feeling what happens, and we can see a turnaround, you know, we don't care. We don't care if there's money involved, or if there isn't, or you need this, or you need that. And I do have all licensed therapists. I have counselors, I have 25 of them, different kinds. But we are there, and I've seen these turnarounds because everybody can do something, even if they have handicaps or whatever, and that's what I provide for them, and they get strong mentally and physically. So let's look a little deeper than just what we're hearing and seeing right now, because we are going to be doing services for the veterans. We go there, we'll go over to veterans first, wherever we have that facility, we can do it. But right now, they're coming to us because we would need the space. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Any question?
All right. Thank you.
Trying to be fast.
Good evening. I'm Lori North, and I live at 930 Forest Hill Drive in Schmidt Park. And my husband and Steve and I have been at the current address since 1991. Our property is within 400 feet of the proposed site of the Tiny Home Project. My husband is a Vietnam veteran and had served in the United States Marine Corps. My husband and I do not support the Veterans First Tiny Home Project at their proposed location in Schmidt Park. Some of our concerns regarding this proposed project are possible lower property values, crime, drug use, inadequate social and mental health support for the veterans. Veterans First state they will have onsite care coordinators on the tiny home site for 24/7 management, but evening, night, and weekend onsite care coordinators would be veteran residents. My concern is the ability, education, and qualifications of the veteran residents to manage their own needs as well as others. Because there's been talk about, you know, some of these people recovering from alcohol abuse, PTSD. I'm a retired RN, and I know that mental health issues don't conveniently happen 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, so that is a large concern that I have. This project is a first attempt by Veterans First, and no one can predict the outcome or success of the project. If this project does proceed but fails and is abandoned, would the site become an eyesore and a source for illegal activities? Would the abandoned site become a location for other homeless populations? The Schmidt Park neighborhood should not be subjected to an unknown environment that this project presents. Thank you.
Thanks for your testimony. All right. Thank you.
Bill Swayze, 222 Nicolay Drive, Spur Team. When I was attending the Army Engineer School at Fort Belvoir in Virginia, I was privileged to visit the Arlington National Cemetery on Memorial Day. The untold thousands of erect white gravestones are aligned in perfect rows, and every headstone had a carefully positioned American flag in front of it. I was immediately captivated by the solemn solemnity of this hallowed Army Veterans Cemetery. Placards along the pathways read simply, quote, "Silence and Respect," end quote. The former Brown County Mental Health Center property includes a cemetery previously known as the Poor Farm or Asylum Cemetery. Burial records reveal that it operated for 73 years, from 1858 until May 12, 1931. Note that that was well before they put any parking lots or anything around the mental health center. It is conservatively calculated that over 803 troubled souls are buried there. None of those graves were ever marked, but it is entirely reasonable to believe that some Civil War veterans and World War I veterans are likely buried there. Somebody mentioned something about veterans being there from World War II. World War II hadn't come till about 16 years later. We are aware of nine additional Poor Farm Asylum Cemeteries of that same vintage and ilk spread across Wisconsin. Former Brown County Planning Director Chuck Lemain said about that cemetery, quote, "The real good, the real goal is to show our respects and to honor the deceased. Maybe we'd create some kind of park." Wisconsin DNR proclaims that, quote, "Burial sites are universally considered sacred and will be treated with the respect they deserve," end quote. A Wisconsin State Historical Society official recently stated that there is a "high likelihood", "high likelihood" of encountering burial sites within the southern boundary of the Vets One proposed site. Even Vets One acknowledged that their site does indeed invade the "do not disturb" cemetery area by around 10 feet. In spite of those facts and quotes, the Plan Commission has recommended that Vets One be allowed to commence excavating, even if they dig up bodies in the process.
Sir, your time has expired?
I have two lines. This contested important issue can be easily settled by first requiring a ground penetrating radar study to confirm the presence of the bodies within the Vets One site. Human decency, reverence, and respect demand that, or have we lost our moral compass? May God guide us and bless us one and all.
Thanks for your testimony. Any questions? All right. Thanks, sir. Any final comments?
Good evening. Hans Christiansen, 2855 Mount Carroll Drive. I represent the Spur Team, and I am opposed to this project. What good story, what makes a good story without a good villain? Unfortunately, the residents of Schmidt Park have been painted into this role by the developer Vets One without our consent. First, to all the veterans that are left, our opposition was characterized by Vets First as being against veterans. Let me assure you, that is the furthest from the truth. It may come as a surprise to you to understand that I too am a veteran and a nurse and a healthcare executive. I joined this, I signed up for this role on January 8th, the night Kim and Gail attended our board meeting. I thought it would be a fantastic opportunity to offer my skill set to this organization to make it a wonderful success. Things started off very collegially, very cordially. I was sending my famous email tranches to them, and they were responding. I developed a dashboard of all the issues that were related, and I see at least I made it into their application process with my dashboard. So we had high hopes. We were really doing well. Gail and I had a great relationship, or so I thought. In February, I was told not to communicate with Gail any longer and that Kim would take the communication. Caused me some pause, but I agreed. I had subsequently sent notes to Kim and never got a response, and that has been like that since February. We have had such an adversarial relationship for no reason. There was no reason at all for this to happen. We were put in an unfortunate position by the county. The county should have done their due diligence on this work and not pinned it on the neighbors. We have alienated our neighborhood, we have torn apart our board of directors because of the stress, the strife. This project proposal has done more damage to an outstanding neighborhood in five short months than I can let you know. You've heard a lot of passion tonight. I've led this team for five months. They are a wonderful group. I couldn't think of a finer group of people to work with. Yes, Tom, you get a little passionate, we try to calm you down, but you'll get a martini later, and, but we've controlled that passion. So I will just end with some questions that you may have. I apologize to David Buck. I would be remiss. David, please throw away that voodoo doll of me. It's, I surrender. And to the elders and to the mayor, thank you for reading my notes. I know I've sent you some rather long dissertations, but I felt they were necessary to create- I know I've sent you some rather long dissertations, but I felt they were necessary to create understanding with this project, and I sincerely hope that you do the right thing and make the county responsible for making this decision and not the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Hello, I'm Major General Retired Dan Ammerman. I'm, my address is 1983 Paint Horse Trail in DePere. I'm on the Board of Directors for Veterans First. And just want to highlight a few things. You know, first of all, even though I'm from DePere, four times I took soldiers from Green Bay, from Green Bay Civil Affairs Army Reserve Battalion downtown, took them to combat zones, Bosnia, Kosovo, Iraq, twice. Since then, they've been Afghanistan, currently, you know, we just had some troops return from Europe, you know, post-retirement. And I think, you know, I don't think any of them expected that they would go ahead and be, they liked the fanfare, of course, but didn't really expect anything in return. Basically, you go, you serve your nation, and you put yourself in harm's way, and you come back, but, you know, at least you expect that if you do have issues, your nation would go ahead and take care of you. As members of community, and I know that there's some veterans in that group also, and there's people at Veterans Manor and stuff also, they talked about wanting this as a park or a green space, and I get that. If I was a homeowner, I'd like a green space or a park near me that I didn't have to pay for either. I mean, that would, that would be great. But at the end of the day, this land was, what we're going to use the land for is consistent for what we're using it for. All these concerns were brought up to the Planning Council, yet the Planning Council was unanimous in deciding that this should go forward, so in recommending that Veterans First go ahead with this project. And this land was also, you know, built on before, you know, parking lots and buildings. And all the concerns about the graveyards, concerns about the Dry Creek, those have all been brought up. And also, there's some checks and balances in the process if there's any issues along the way. So I see no reason why this shouldn't go forward, and, you know, other than, you know, some of this not in my backyard type of stuff. Now, I do, you know, out of respect to the people in Schmidt Park area, I do expect that once this moves forward and is being built, they'll rally behind the veterans. But that's my comments. Thank you.
Thanks for your service and testimony. Any questions? All right, thanks, sir.
Mark Burgland, 806 North Broadway. I was contacted by former Alder Mark Steyer. He had sent me a little thing that he would like me to present on his behalf. I don't know if that's allowable.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, sure, yeah. He's on Washington Island with very limited connectivity.
That sounds like him.
Okay, so I'll read it verbatim. My name is Mark Steyer, and I reside at 1730 Nancy Avenue in Green Bay. In a previous testimony, I have stated that Veterans First would have to honor each of the various stipulations that a planned unit development would place on their cottage court project for veterans. If they do not honor these stipulations, the project would end. I have every confidence in Gail and Kim Noor and the dozens of supporters and organizations with respect to this project. Our veterans have put their lives on hold and in harm's way so that we, the general citizenry, can live our lives in freedom. Thank you.
Thanks for your testimony.
Well, thank you. I think at this point in time, I give the disclaimer that those are not necessarily the views of the presenter.
Sure. Appreciate it. Thanks for reading those, though. Any final comments from the gallery? Seeing none? Motion to close the floor made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder DeLee. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, the floor is closed. Yeah, we can take a brief recess. We'll be back, though, right at 9:25. The hour of 9:25 having arrived and passed us by, I'll reconvene meeting of our common council. Looking for a motion. Because we do have that amendment that's been attached to the item. So looking for a motion or comments from council? Alder Grant.
Director Buck, can you, I know we kind of talked about this, just for clarification for the rest of the council. If bones are found, whose decision is what steps we're next to do?
Sorry. Go ahead. Okay, thank you. That would be the Wisconsin Historical Society. There's two offices in there, the Burial Sites Office and the Office of the State Archaeologists. Go ahead.
So technically, we would not know what the next steps would be as far as moving the bodies. The development would stop permanently from that point. My point is, is we really don't know what the step, next steps would be. Is that correct?
The state would take control at that point. At any development site, if there's artifacts or anything found, all work has to stop, and an archaeologist has to, an approved archaeologist has to be on site to start the state process.
Okay, and the only reason I bring that up is I just want to make sure that as a council, we're, we understand those next steps are out of our control, and we have to be okay with that. One more question, just for clarification. I know we talked about this earlier, but Attorney Bunker, with the amendment as it stands, with it being a general veterans, we are still allowing them to choose if they take people outside of that. That is something now between the county and Veterans First. Is that correct?
Correct. With that designation, it will then fit within whatever the scope is for, and contingencies for the land transfer.
Okay. That's all for questions. Thank you.
I think so. Other comments or questions from council? Or motions? Take those, too. Alder Johnson, and then Alder Eck, and then Alder Hankfuss.
Thank you, Mayor. So again, much, you know, one of the difficult challenges we oftentimes have with neighborhood issues is we become the jury, right? And facts are presented on both sides, and, you know, and we kind of have to weigh the pros and cons, and so when I think about, like, the number of issues that have been presented to us, there's many. I think, you know, and each of you is going to make your own judgment around the merits of what those items are and how you feel about them based on the facts presented. I think the one that, to me, though, felt overwhelmingly apparent, you know, was the concerns around the burial site, right? That was the one that we heard. I personally have no concerns over management. I think the board has that taken care of. That's an incredible board. Actually, I wish that board, I wish I had the opportunity to work with that board. You know, I think there's, you know, when it comes to, I guess, some of the other outreach, I mean, obviously, if this were to move forward, I think there's some reconciliation that needs to occur with the neighborhood. You know, but when I look particularly again around the burial site, one of the things that I just jotted down is, gosh, this neighborhood clearly shows a lot of passion, a lot of love for their neighborhood. You know, and I just think, given the overall concern for that burial site and its placement in the neighborhood, one of the things I would ask the neighborhood to do is maybe rally around that as an initiative for an appropriate, you know, appropriate recognition and preservation of this site. I think that's something worthwhile to consider in the future. But given that, I think, I'm not sensing there's an immense amount of time sensitivity around this. This is part of the process of moving forward. And just, you know, sort of a little bit of a sidebar that I had with the mayor, I am going to make a motion, and then, of course, we'll debate that particular item. But I am going to make a motion to refer this back to staff and request that staff actively work to potentially identify alternative sites within the city that could be brought back to this body for consideration. I want to be clear, that doesn't mean it will go that way or it has to go that way, but I think we would be remiss to at least not give that an opportunity for consideration.
Okay, Alder Johnson makes a motion. Is there a second for that? Seconded by Alder Morgan. Comments on the motion? Still on the motion, Alder Eck?
I mean, I have two different comments, but, so I'll comment on the motion. So, looking in different, the city, but I think it would be great if the county was involved with that, maybe possible other county properties, so that would be on there, too.
If I could clarify, yeah. When I say refer to the staff, I did say in the city of Green Bay. It could be, let me modify that and say county.
Thank you.
Alder Hankfuss?
My only comment is, in talking to some of the county supervisors, one of, a couple of, or one of their major concerns is that this be veterans-only if it moves forward on that site. So, getting the county involved with the staff and making sure that they, you know, agree with it would be prudent of us.
Yeah, and just, you know, from my point of view, not suggesting that the county has put us in a little bit of a bind with that last-minute bit of news, but it creates some real legal issues that are a little bit unclear to all of us. And so I think it would be a benefit for our city attorney and the corporation council to get together so that there's clear understanding on both sides about what this sort of last-minute demand, what that looks like legally for us.
Alder Prophet?
Yeah, I would just say, with the knowledge that that language being removed may impact the sale of the property, and I spoke on the phone, there is one burial expert whose job is just burials within the city at the, or within the state at the Wisconsin Historical Society. She had indicated via the phone to me that if the deed owner were to reach out and ask for their further imaging of where those bodies may be located, they'd be willing to give that, but only to the deed owner. So with that in mind, I would actually make a motion to hold to the June 11th meetings of the common council pending some discussions with the county board, that they're still okay with that language legally, having to not be there as they intended, and that I would, if we're able to make that inquiry to them, since they are the deed holders with the Wisconsin Historical Burial Experts, to get that imaging that the Wisconsin Historical Society has in their possession.
Okay. Question for Attorney Bunker. We've got sort of like dueling motions. So curious if Alder Prophet's motion takes precedent over Alder Johnson's? If there's a second also for Alder Prophet's motion?
I should make a point of order, Mayor. I don't know that the referral ever received a second.
It did.
Oh, did it? I apologize, I didn't hear that. Okay.
Motion to refer and then a motion to hold.
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying.
Yeah. Any comments before we dispose of those? Alder Johnson?
Yeah, and I appreciate what Alder Prophet is suggesting, and, you know, broadly speaking, not opposed to that, but I think a referral could accomplish that and what I'm asking for. So I'm going to respectfully request the members of the body to oppose the motion, only because I think the referral can accomplish both.
Anything on that, Alder Prophet?
Yeah, I would just say, is there a timetable for that referral to staff? Keeping in mind that we'd like to see this project come to life.
Yeah, I think it's immediate, I mean, the referral's immediate, and so then it would really be up to staff how long it would take them to compile that information.
Alder Grant, you have something?
Thank you. Yeah, I was just going to say, I agree with Alder Johnson, only because if we can accomplish both things, get all parties involved, we need to get, we need to do better at being on the same page with the county and working with them. But also, what I keep hearing is, we support our veterans, we don't think this is a bad idea, so let's think of other possibilities of places that will avoid some of the burial concerns, the ground concerns, the chemicals, stuff like that. So I think it's great to kind of have all of that information come back to us at one time.
I would just take issue with your characterization of us needing to get on the same page with the county. They dropped this news very last minute.
I'm not saying us personally, it just, it gives us time to start working with them, and I think we're on a good path to doing so.
Appreciate that. Attorney Bunker, on the motion?
Yes, the motion to postpone is, it takes priority over the motion to refer.
Okay, so Alder Prophet's motion is in order here? Alder Prophet?
Could I just make one more comment? If we refer and just hold for another two weeks pending that discussion, what's the harm in those additional two weeks? If we can get conversation from the county and some of those key points that were raised tonight, and that still doesn't address those concerns, I think then we could refer if we still feel uneasy about that site. That would be my final comment.
Okay, thanks, Alder. Alder Eck on the motion?
I think we still have to consider the Schmidt Park neighborhood in general and their feelings on it, so I think that it would, like Alder Johnson said, it would accomplish both things. All of that. It'd encompass that.
Okay, thanks, Alder. Anything final? Alder Morgan?
Yeah, the reason I second it, I really agree with Alder Johnson's concept there. We all want the veterans to have every opportunity. I mean, looking through the audience, I saw several of my friends out there that I'm sure would be very disappointed if we didn't do the right thing for those people, for what they've done for us. But at the same time, there's too many questions, you know, about the burial sites. Do we really know? Is it legal for the county to give away the property? I don't know. So, but that's the reason I second it, and that's why I support the referral.
Okay, thanks, Alder. Anything further on the motion to hold until our next meeting offered by Alder Prophet? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Anybody want? Rule call? Rule call's been requested. This is on the motion to hold.
You may go.
Till our next meeting. This is motion to hold.
What happened to Brian's motion?
Motion to hold takes precedent, that's why we asked the city attorney.
So we still have Alders Grant, Presley, DeLee, and Hankfuss? Are you seeing it on your boards? No.
Yeah. Correct. Yep.
Alder Grant, how would you like to be recorded? And Alder Presley, how would you like to be recorded? Sorry?
Yes.
Thank you. Alder DeLee, how would you like to be recorded?
Yes.
Thank you. And Alder Hankfuss, how would you like to be recorded?
No.
And that motion fails, seven to four. Alder Johnson's underlying motion is still here?
Can I just make a comment, Mayor?
Yeah, Alder Johnson on your motion.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And again, I just, the reason I'm urging the referrals, because quite frankly, I don't want to see this project fail tonight. I do think that this is a wonderful project. Our community needs to see it. I think Alder Prophet, you're spot on with your comments, right? We need to figure out how to expedite this. I think we've got to get some stronger dialogue going in the room. I don't, I don't think good projects start with this level of friction, which is unfortunate. So if there is, if there's a way that we can rally the support of the neighborhood behind something like this, if there's a way that we can find, you know, to get answers to some of the underlying questions we've had about the relationship or the, you know, the commitment from the county, some, maybe even some of the operations, right, that some of the folks have raised, there's a little bit of time to, for all of us to seek those answers. Take some time to meet with Kim and Gail and others at the board. But more importantly, I just, we need this in our community. We do, right? Whether it's the city of Green Bay, Brown County, honestly, we need to find a way to make this happen, because this is a good project that's serving a dire need that we have in our community. I hope we can all agree that that need is there, and that, and that we need to come together as a council and really figure out how to march forward on that. So I'm entrusting, you know, the mayor and the staff to meet with county reps, to meet with folks that have all spoken here tonight, and find a path forward. I know they've always done a wonderful job, and we've seen that happen before at this body, right? We've seen that happen where a project the council didn't feel like it could quite fit because, for a variety of reasons, sent it back and it came back, right? In a new package, in a new light, in a way that everybody unanimously supported, I believe. So I'm hoping that we can see the same thing here.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Weary and then Alder Morgan, and thank you, Alder Weary, for pressing your button, and Alder Morgan. Reminder to folks, that's the preferred option. Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, speaking to...
Yeah, speaking to Alder Johnson, President Johnson, sorry, makes me say that. Not too long ago, we had a proposal on Military Avenue that we didn't quite think fit, and so we put it aside for a little while, and then we approved it on the east side, and it's, looks like it's going to be a success over there. So delaying isn't always defeat. Tiny Homes for Veterans is a, you know, worthy and inspiring proposal. I think we all agreed to that. I think it's the right, it's the wrong site. I want to be clear that I'm opposed to this site. If it comes back for this site and you don't get the buy-in of the Alder person in the neighborhood, I'm not going to be for it. There's a number of, you know, the uncertainty of the number and location of burial sites, possibly eight hundred, that's astounding. You know, and as an aside, it's a shame that the county has let this go for so long, for decades. For decades, they've ignored it. It's been their property. So they need to do something about this. That's horrible. That, you know, this should have been a park or dedicated area a long time ago, with that area, you know, delineated. Another reason would be the Alder of the areas opposed, the vast majority of the residents are united and opposed. You know, most of the people who spoke in favor of this, I think, were from outside of Green Bay, not all. But now I kind of jotted down a lot of the residences, Swamaco Dupure, Swamaco, Appleton, Bellevue, Schwabanan, Swamaco Dupure. And then that's good, it has support, but who do we represent? We represent the people of Green Bay and the people of that area, and if they're not comfortable with it, why should we be? And maybe some time will heal that, I don't know. And then the state statutes, we should really look at those violation concerns of illegal to donate county land, protection of graveyard sites. So plenty of questions, and hopefully we can find a happy resolution that we can all move forward with, but not if it's for that site. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Morgan, no? Alder Presley?
Yeah, I approve of this motion to refer to staff. I think that I, you know, the Veterans First Board and the people who spoke today have addressed a lot of the concerns that I had and that I heard. I think they've been very diligent, they have responded to community complaints, they've increased the size of their board, they've gotten more experts on board, they've looked into the environmental concerns, they've looked into the poor farm burial site concerns. I think we do need to do a little bit more, but yes, I hope that the Schmidt Park residents, you know, once these concerns are met, will get on board with this, and that we don't have piling up concerns that stem from a deeper opposition to it. I hope once concerns are met, then we can go forward, because I don't want to postpone this indefinitely. So I hope when it comes back after staff has looked into it and our concerns are fixed in a way that we can continue on with this development, because I do think it is a fantastic idea, and we need housing, and we need housing for veterans.
Okay. Thanks, Alder. Any final comments on the motion to refer to staff? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, that item has been referred to staff. And just from my point of view, you know, I take that motion very seriously. I pledge to Veterans First and to everyone gathered here that I'm going to do everything I possibly can to make sure that this development happens. As Alder Presley said, this is the kind of development we are in desperate need of for homeless individuals and especially for homeless veterans, and so we're going to do whatever we can to make sure that this project comes to fruition somewhere in the city of Green Bay. So with that, we're going to move along to a report of the Improvement and Services Committee.
The motion to approve?
Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Presley. Items here to be handled separately?
Sorry, Mayor, just question, him?
Yeah. Any separate items? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, that report has been approved. Report of the Protection and Policy Committee?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Prophet. Items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor of the report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, that report has been approved. Protection and Policy Committee granting operator licenses?
Okay.
Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any names to be handled separately or abstentions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, that report has been approved. Report of the Finance Committee?
Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Hankfuss.
Items here to be handled separately?
Four.
Four?
Item four.
Any others? Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved with the exception of item four. Your wish is here.
I'd like to make a motion to open the floor. We have people here who are slightly more interested.
Okay, Alder Morgan makes a motion to open the floor. Just check your mic, Alder. Is there a second? Second by Alder Weary. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it, floor is open.
I'm the publisher of the Green Bay Press Times, and I...
What's your address, sir?
310 West Walnut, Green Bay, 54303. And I, first of all, this is my first council meeting, and boy, I really, my hat's off to you, I appreciate all that you do to help govern this community, so I, I, I'm very impressed. I don't know if I'll be back, though. But anyway, thank you for allowing me to speak. We are asking the city council to reconsider the finance committee's recommendation and retain the Press Times as the official newspaper of Green Bay. So that is, that is what I'm asking for you to consider tonight. The finance committee's recommendation was reluctantly made, and if you see, if you're all there, you know, it was in quotes, "reluctantly" made, and was ba, I wasn't there, but I had watched the film, and was based on an inaccurate understanding of the state statute that they were being forced to take the lowest-priced bid with no discretion allowed. And if you refer to Lee Conwayle on each X letter that we've sent to you, you'll, you will see that discretion is available in this particular bid. It's an RFB, understandably so, but I'll just go through it, it's going to take only a couple of minutes. The bid for, the request for bid specifically said that discretion was in fact allowed if in the best interest of the community. Let me read a small part of this bid, and I refer to the third paragraph of the bid, you have the bid with you. I quote, "The city reserves the right to reject any or all proposals to waive any technicality and accept any proposal that is deemed to be in the best interests of the city of Green Bay. The city further reserves the right to terminate the purchase at any time with written notice." The fact is that two bids were based on the financial committee's analysis, were within pennies of each other, very close. And if you looked at, if you looked at subscriber base versus press runs, I mean, we can run a hundred thousand copies on our presses if we want, but if you look at subscriber bases, subscriber bases, you'll see that we're very, very, very close. Plus, the analysis itself was done in a discretionary manner, discretionary, there's that word again, accounting for only seventy-eight percent of the twenty twenty-three spending projected to 2024. If in fact the committee had recognized that the Press Times is a weekly paper, so all notices are printed once a week, in contrast, the daily paper, some notices have to be printed three times, as much as three times a week because of liquor licenses and things like that. And then I would speculate that the, if you take in that consideration, a daily versus a weekly, at very similar circulation, I speculate that we would win, especially if you had, you could count out how many times that you'd have to put it in a daily and pay three times as much. But most important, most important with regard to the discretion language afforded in the bid, we at the Press Times, we're family, employee-owned, everything we do is local news. We are Green Bay's local paper, you know. Our three stewardships are hyper-local news, everything we report upon, and if you look at our publications, we've gone from twenty-three hundred in 2017 to nearly nine thousand, ten thousand in circulation, paid circulation. So we've gone like this. Anyone else in our industry has gone like that. It shows that we're doing a really good job of covering local news, high school sports, everything local, and...
Anything final, sir? We are...
Final, yeah. So not only do we do hyper-local news, we're also doing a paid internship program with UWGB, St. Norbert College, N W T C, so we're, we are looking at the future of this industry, and everyone in Wisconsin and the NNA are looking at us as the future, and we also do everything we can to ameliorate homelessness in Wisconsin. We've done a lot of concrete things to do that here in Green Bay and everywhere else in Wisconsin as leaders in our industry to give the people that don't have a voice a voice. So I thank you. I do believe that we have a noble, a noble purpose, and I do say that regardless of what, how you vote tonight, we still are Green Bay's local paper.
All right, thank you, sir, for your testimony. Any questions? I guess Alder Presley?
Well, I love the news, so, and I appreciate your work in the news lab and doing local news for Green Bay. I did, because you're comparing yourself to the Green Bay Press Gazette in terms of local coverage and local ownership, so I just had two questions. Like, first, is there a parent company that owns the Press Times? Is it part of a media...
Yes, it's MMC, it's family-owned and operated. Mike Oliver, one of, is one of our employees. All of the operations team have certain percentages of the company. I admittedly own the majority of it, so it's, as a CEO, I'm running it, and, but we are, everyone here is locally owned, all the money stays here, and if you look at our competition, I didn't say Press Gazette, okay, but you did, so if you look at our competition, they're owned by Fortress Investments, that, they're headquartered in New York. SoftBank headquartered in Tokyo owns Fortress Investments, and so nobody's here in this community that's doing anything that gives a hoot. You're never going to see the CEO of SoftBank come here and say, hey, please look at us as a local paper or care about it, like we do. We've invested over a hundred thousand dollars in the last two years to do everything that we're doing here, from all the local news, the internship program, the podcasts that we're looking into now, the whole relationship that we have with expanding our internship program. In fact, we added Notre Dame de La Baye and Bayport High School, so we're reaching deeper to try and, anyone that has those, those possible passions, we're going to have them, they'll be able to make a choice with our internship program.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good question and good information, obviously, but I think it's important for either Attorney Bungert or Director Ellenbecker to really instruct the council on what we're able to take into account, or what you all are able to take into account when making this decision.
Sure.
So Attorney Bungert?
Yep.
Yes, sorry. Before, before we do that, entertain a motion to close the floor. Got one more question, sorry. Hold that thought, Attorney Alder Weary?
Thank you for coming and staying through the long meeting.
Thank you for having me.
I remember the last time around, I had looked forward to voting you as our official paper instead of the Press Gazette, because it seems like their presence is diminishing in the area and yours is growing. You're even on Broadway here in Green Bay. And you give an impressive list of what you do and what you mean to the community and where the dollars stay, and the difference in the bids, I think it was like five hundred and fifty dollars. It seems like for all the things you've listed, it's well worth that, that difference. Do you agree with that?
In the interest of the community, but no matter what, even if you don't vote us, we're still going to be here and do everything that we do do and still invest in it. So you're in a win-win situation, but yes, I think that what we do for the community, how much we care about it, I went to Abbott Pennies High School, St. Norbert College, Notre Dame, Mass or whatever, and we love, you know, we love this community, and that's what we're all about. Everything that we're doing is all local, it's all focused on the community of Green Bay.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Entertaining a motion to close the floor? Motion to close the floor made by Alder Ek, seconded by Alder Hankfuss, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, floor is closed, thank you. Attorney Bungert?
Yes. So the selection of the official city newspaper is prescribed under state statutes, so it provides, the process has to be a sealed bid. The only criteria that's reviewed is basically the lowest cost. So whoever comes in with the lowest bid is awarded the contract. What's actually in front of you is just the approval to execute the contract. So there is really no discretion in selecting the bid. There could be potentially, if there's a tie, meaning that the bids that are offered are exactly the same, but in this instance, we had a lower bid, that is what the statute selects, should be, or needs to be, the city newspaper. But only the city council has the authority to give the mayor authority to sign off on contracts, and so that's what's actually going forward for approval.
Okay. Questions related to that? Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to, I hope I don't mind, Diane, I'm going to use your email exchange with myself, because I remember in the past, obviously it was a closed bid, so you have to take the lowest one. Fine, you know, we get that, but then that's a recommendation to the council, and I was advised that the council can approve or not approve of the recommendation of the Press Gazette.
Right. So I, and I didn't, this wasn't clarified at the Finance Committee meeting when we discussed this, but upon reviewing the statute further, there really is no discretion. It's whoever has the lowest bid shall be awarded the contract. So there's no, there's not up to, there isn't a mechanism wherein, you know, the city places a recommendation and the council then has to approve it. The contract is supposed to be, under state statute, awarded to the lowest bidder, and council has to provide the authority to be able to execute the contract with the lowest bidder.
Well, I'd make a motion to hold this item until we could get, you know, the proper, I guess, I don't want to say proof, support for that opinion.
Sure. I mean, we can, we can review the state statute, but if council's will is to hold, we can do that as well.
Second by, I'm sorry, were you incorrect?
Second by Alder Johnson. Is, just a quick question, is there a timeliness factor to this at all, Attorney Bungert or Director Ellenbecker? Does it have to be approved by some particular date in the calendar?
Tom, Tom Walensky, our purchasing manager is on, procurement manager is online. I believe there is a July first end date. You see, that is when...
June.
June, June first?
Okay, should we get Mr. Walensky to chime in?
Yeah, if you would like.
Tom, if you're there?
Good evening.
Good evening. Did you hear the discussion and question?
Yes, I did. The current contract expires on May 31st, the new contract would start on June 1st, and we have to have a contract in place, we can't have a gap. So if you decide that you want to postpone it or table it, it may create a gap between our contract.
Okay. Alder Morgan on that? This is on the motion to hold.
I'd just like to know what would happen if we took a vote tonight and seven voted no, five voted yes, say, the majority voted no to accept this contract. What would happen?
To not, to not provide the city authority, then we would be in violation of state statute for not having designated the official city newspaper.
Thank you.
Alder Ek. Alder Ek first.
Okay. So if I'm understanding correctly in all the, the information that was provided, it sounds like we're not comparing apples to apples. It's like an apples to oranges thing. That's what it sounded like, like you gave us information based on something, but then the Press Gazette is, or, whatever, it is Press Gazette, we know that, has it, where it's going to cost us more in the end? If that's what I'm getting from what the gentleman spoke, that it's going to, it's actually costs more money because we have to do it three times a week versus one time a week.
Alder Stevens and then Alder Johnson? Alder Stevens and then Alder Johnson?
If this council decided to not allow the mayor to sign the contract, you say we'd be in violation, but what steps would happen next for staff to make sure we're not in violation? Would it go back off the bid?
At that point, I, we'd have to probably do more research, because the statutes don't, don't provide us any other next steps, it's pretty clear that it, it says that the paper that is making the lowest effective bid for the city's legal notices shall be awarded the contract therefore, period. So there's, there's no mechanism or any kind of instructions as to what happens if, for some reason, the contract isn't, so then we will have to start figuring out what other options the city has for mitigating its exposure at that point, but-
All good, thank you.
Yep.
Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm still gonna support the hold, look, I, I, I'm not an attorney, and, and I'm sure Attorney Bungert would probably disagree with me, but worst-case scenario, DOA is gonna send us a letter and say, you're out of compliance, get in compliance, and, and we'll do that, right? So it's not like we're gonna indefinitely not make a decision here, so, but there are, I think the key questions that I have that do, I think, require a little bit of contemplation and maybe answer is, we made a presumption about the 78%, you know, based on, on historical data, but the other piece that I don't recall seeing in the bid set was a presumption about the running three times versus one time, and quite frankly, we, we have that on this letter, that's not anything that's been, you know, submitted formally, and so I do think it requires a little bit of time to get an answer on that from, from our attorney, and to really determine if that, you know, if that way were, were factored in, would that change the outcome. I think, I think we owe that to this process, so I'll, I'll support the hold for that reason.
Yes, Alder. Yeah, Attorney Bungert?
One more additional point, so the other consequence would be if this, if the city newspaper isn't approved in a timely manner, is it could effectively halt a lot of city business, because we're not gonna have a vehicle by which we have to, we're compelled to have a official state, or official city newspaper, and that is how we publish our legal notices for zoning, for public hearings, things like that, so all of that would halt until, so it's more than just, it's more, it's more than perhaps getting an admonishment from DOA or whatever else, it, it, it pretty much puts us in, in a very difficult situation with respect to city business.
Right, I mean, I, I would suggest that council should understand that we would have to probably have a special meeting to make this designation before the deadline, otherwise, to Attorney Bungert's point, we won't, won't be able to, to notice anything, and as a result, we wouldn't be able to meet at all. Let's see, Alder Hankfist and then Alder Weary.
Back to comparing apples to oranges, if we have to, you know, the bids when they came in, if the Press Gazette is assuming three times a week, and what I read from the Press Times, one time a week, and we can do that, because it's always on a Friday, I, I'm with Brian, I support the hold to really understand that.
On that, I don't know if Mr. Walensky can weigh in on how the, the bids were structured?
Sure, you know, there's been a little bit of conversation that only 78% of the spend was accounted for, 100% of the spend was accounted for, 78% of the spend came out as two categories and 22 came out of three categories. On the bid sheet, you'll notice there's about 15 line items, but our spend was only in five areas from 2023, so that's how we did our cost comparison, and we used the, the coefficient of one from the 2023 spend, and that's where we got our end number and the $500 difference. As far as the Press Gazette being a daily publication, that doesn't increase the expense. When we have to put a publication out or a solicitation, we may have to list it once, or they call it a level one, or twice a level two, or three a level three, we only have to publish it three times, but we typically will do it once a week, so even if it's a daily publication or a weekly publication, the, a number of times that you're going to run that is the same.
Okay, thank you for that. Alder Eck and then Alder Morgan?
Okay, so I, and I apologize, I can't remember your name, but-
Mr. Wood.
What is it? Mr. Wood, just offered to do it for free during that period of time, does that hap-
That's not how-
Not a possibility? Well, I just wanted to acknowledge that he said that.
It's not how government works.
Yep.
Alder Morgan?
Without having the contract in front of you, would there normally be something that that contract is still in effect until the new one is signed?
I, I don't know, it could have a termination, a set termination date, or it could, you know, just automatically continue, but I don't have the contract. There is the option under, so, under, the statute is 985.06, if, oh, sorry, if for any reason, any city is at any time without an official city newspaper, matters required to be published can be published in a newspaper eligible under 98503, but it still has to be designated by council, so, so a decision still has to be made, so you have to have one temporarily until the issue is worked out.
Alder Hutchinson?
So in order to choose the second low bid, we'd essentially be rejecting the first bid. Now, is the city liable for?
It doesn't have, right, it doesn't have the authority to reject, because the statute provides that the lowest bidder gets it.
Okay, so this-
It's not up to the discretion of council.
So the statute is very straightforward, we take the low bid.
And it takes out other criteria, I think, there was some discussion as far as a weekly versus a daily that doesn't factor in under the statute, in case the law speaks to that as well, the factor that is considered is price, that's it.
Alder Weary?
I think it would be an excellent idea to have a special meeting, we have 10 days, we've had so many special meetings over the years, answer the, you know, the questions by the attorney, provide answers to those, and then we can move forward.
Yeah, and I would just emphasize that we absolutely need to do that.
Yeah.
Because I don't think it would be wise to pursue a different path. Other questions?
Again, if the state statute is clear that we have to take the low bid, I don't understand why we're meeting again, because it's clear, we have two bids, one's low, one's second low, so in order to change that, we'd have to go against the law, so I don't understand what's going on in terms of waiting.
Alder Weary in response to that?
It would be to answer the questions about the bid process and how they were answered, I, I think it's important-
Right, so the bid process itself will be, it, that's conducted by purchasing, according to the guidelines that we have for procurement, so it's not really a legal question as to how the-
I understand, but there's enough raised here that I would like these answered before I vote on it.
Sure.
Okay.
We do have purchasing on the line to answer, but-
I don't think you've seen this, though, so.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Alder Prophet?
Yeah, I would just say I pulled up the state statute right away, because that is included in one of these handouts, so thank you for providing those, and thank you Attorney Bungert for addressing that. My concern with the holds outside of legality, which is a huge concern in my opinion, is that the state statute also does dictate timing of this, they say the second Tuesday of April, it will be advertised to go to bid on the, or no later than noon, the first Tuesday of May, so I just, I do not see the value in a hold when state statute is pretty clear, and it is pretty much verbatim from what our city attorney has reiterated tonight, so I am against a hold, and I would like to make a decision tonight so we can move forward and be in compliance.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments on the motion to hold? Alder Presley, then Alder Morgan?
Yeah, I am against the hold as well, I think that the question of the daily versus the weekly was the only thing that would have kept me from making a decision today, and that has been substantially cleared up, the law is clear, that bidding process is clear, so I, I'm prepared to vote today.
Okay, thanks, Alder. Alder Morgan?
I had one question, and this was provided from Mr. Wood, so it shows a bid thing here, I don't know if this is the official one or not, but they've highlighted where it says the city reserves the right to reject, any or all proposals are to waive any technicality and accept any proposal that is deemed to be in the best interest of the city of Green Bay. City further reserves the right to terminate the purchase at any time without, with written notice. So does our own bid supersede the state statute, or are we misleading people putting that on the bid?
Mr. Walensky, I don't know if you'd be able to weigh in on that, that language that Alder Morgan is, has highlighted?
Yeah, I can share some information on that, so when we go through that bid, we have a checkoff list, so when those proposals and bids and quotes come in, we have a bid opening and we have a checkoff list, when we go through that list, we verify that it is compliant, once it's compliant, then it is considered for a final award. Both of these bids were compliant, so when we went through that process and followed the schedule, so everything was put out when it had to be put out, those two bids were compliant. In my eyes, I don't see any reason to throw one out, because it, I'm following the guidelines of looking at price, comparing the two, and making a recommendation on the low price.
Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Any other questions or comments on the motion to hold? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. Oppose, nay? Just want the board? Yeah, we'll use the board for the vote.
You may vote.
It's motion to hold.
Yes to halt? Alder DeLee? Thank you. And Alder Hankfist?
Yes.
And motion to hold succeeds, seven to four. Now we are on to report of the park committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Johnson, items here to be handled separately. Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, and that report has been approved. Personnel committee? Motion to approve made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Stevens, items here to be handled separately. Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, that report has been approved. Couple informational items in the packet, building report and municipal court, monthly financial report for April, resolutions. Alder Johnson makes a motion to suspend the rules and take up items one through five with one rule called vote, is there a second for that? Seconded by Alder Prophet, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, the rules are suspended? Motion to adopt, made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Eck, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll use the board. No. She was wondering who votes veterans first.
No, just let me go to the machine. Oh, sorry, I was, I was jumping ahead, I apologize, I'm trying to find someone. Okay, you may vote. And Alder DeLee? Thank you. Wait, oh, wait, 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 Alder Hankfist?
Yes.
Those resolutions are adopted unanimously, on to committee of the hold, we've got a couple of items here, Attorney Bungert, are we able to go into closed on both of them?
Um, no, because the first one, we actually have to have an evidentiary, or the second one, we have to have an evidentiary hearing, so-
Okay, got it. Item one, litigation update in the matter of Senator Andre Jacques et al. versus City of Green Bay et al. Motion has been made to go into closed session by Alder Eck, is there a second? Seconded by Alder Presley, any discussion on the motion? Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What can we tell the public without being in closed session right now? Where, where do we stand?
Attorney Bungert, is there anything?
Basically, we would be able to recite what filings have been made on the record, but we wouldn't be able to get into any detail.
Okay, where, where do we stand, then? What file?
Right now, we're still in discovery, we had a motion to dismiss decision where the Senate was dismissed, and that's the extent of it.
And how long does the discovery last? I don't know what's the deadline.
I think we have an end date, but I'm not, I'm not sure offhand will be what that date is.
Was a court date picked for this?
You mean like a trial date?
Trial date.
Yes, I believe there's a trial date on the calendar.
Do we know when that is?
I'm looking if Attorney Mather has the date, I think it's later in the year.
Okay.
Attorney Mather?
Thank you, so, oh, I apologize, I opened the, I dumped the gun, I opened the wrong document, sorry.
So we're in discovery now, have we received requests for items, and have we sent them out already, or was that just beginning?
Discovery can go back and forth for more than just one set, so you can use supplemental sets of discovery, so that period is usually extended.
And that could include council members as well? Anything, right?
So that's something that I would want to discuss in closed session.
But could it?
Theoretically, you can include anybody that has any information with respect to the litigation.
Thanks. I bought you a little bit of time. We can always bring that later, we don't have to do it right.
We can talk about it when we come back into open.
Okay. Any other questions? Alder Eck has the motion and a second, Alder Eck, do you have the language in front of you? All right.
The council may convene in closed session pursuant to section 19.85, 1G Wisconsin stats, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is, or is likely to become involved. The council will thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to section 19.85 to Wisconsin stats, to take action on items discussed in closed session, if appropriate, and to consider the remainder of the agenda.
All right, thank you, Alder, we will use the board on that motion.
You may vote. No, we have to have an evidentiary, we have the second one for four to go into closed, yes. We have attorneys here, I'll take counsel to give up, Diane. Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, Alder Hankfist?
Yes.
All right, and that motion passes unanimously, so we will go into closed session. Alder Eck makes a motion to return to regular order of business, seconded by Alder Stevens, all in favor will say aye. Oppose, nay? The ayes have it, we're back to business, no motion necessary on item one. Item two is a quasi-judicial hearing on revocation of Class B license at Madrid Tapas 225 East Walnut. Attorney Bungert?
Yes. All right, so this matters before the common council as an evidentiary hearing, under our ordinances to revoke the liquor license for this establishment, it is a quasi-judicial matter, it is the goal of the common council to provide and conduct a hearing that is fair in form, appearance, and substance, to ensure that this hearing satisfies these goals, each member of the council must confirm that you do not have an interest or conflict in this matter, and you have not received any communications from any person or party about this matter. If any of you do have such a conflict or have had any communications, that would be the time you could do a point of order, state such conflicts, conflicts or communications into the record.
Any of those?
Okay, seeing none, we can now proceed to verify notice, the respondent, Amanda G. Patterson, care of Madrid Tapas and Wine Bar LLC, was personally served with a summons and complaint regarding this petition to revoke the license, and has received proper notice of today's proceedings. There is a copy of the affidavit of service in tonight's council agenda packet, just want to note for the record whether the respondent is present, okay, for the record, she is present this evening. So procedure is, a decision will be made based upon the testimony that's provided and the Green Bay municipal code. At this time, the petitioner's complaint has been made part of the record and will be represented, and the city will be represented by Assistant City Attorney Lindsay Mather, and the respondent has not provided any evidence ahead of today's proceedings, but she will be able to present oral testimony and evidence during the proceeding itself. So the council will be able to hear from both parties before issuing its decision, both sides will have 10 minutes to present testimony and evidence, five minutes for rebuttals, beginning with the respondent, and followed by Attorney, Attorney Mather will go first. Okay. Apologies, Attorney Mather? Apologies, Attorney Mather will go first, and then the respondent will follow. Each speaker will be sworn in as well by the clerk. The evidence needs to be credible, relevant, and probative. Throughout the process, member of, members of council can ask questions of the speakers, but should not be engaging in debate with the speakers. As a reminder, council members also cannot testify or present opinions or statements. Following the arguments, we will go into closed session, deliberate, and then come out and make motions as appropriate. You will either be able to announce your decision tonight, or take the matter under advisement and have the decision at the next council meeting. You will be making findings of fact and conclusions of law based upon the record that is before you. Once those are adopted by the council, copies of the same will be provided to the respondent. All right, at this point, the Assistant City Attorney Mather can proceed, and the clerk can proceed in administering the oath.
I'm going to do it from the ceder.
It doesn't matter. She can go to the podium. Okay. Oh, that's right.
I can be, but I'm representing.
That's okay. Now, right, you're already.
I'm not a witness.
Yes.
Good evening, Alders. So I believe you all have a copy of the complaint in, in the packet. Just to clarify, typically when the council's doing quasi judicial matters, you do hear from the member of the public first. In this situation, this is not an appeal from something that a committee decided, but council is actually originating, the hearings originating here at council, so that's why the city as the petitioner is going first. So basic, essentially, the grounds for revocation in this case are, under the city's municipal code, sorry, I'm inadvertently moving the mouse here, under the municipal code, section four dash eight, any license that has not been in use for a period of 60 days or more is subject to revocation or nonrenewal, and that's part of our municipal code. Excuse me. So Madrid Tapas was granted a license for liquor license 23, 20, 23, 2024, so the current license year. But that license was never issued, meaning that the establishment was never actually able to get the license because there were some outstanding inspections issues that needed to be addressed prior to the license actually being issued to the entity. Specifically, there's, the second level of the building is not, was, it's not habitable space, so anything up there used for habitation needed to be cleared out. There were also requirements that the fire extinguishers had been expired, and so those needed to be replaced. There were some housekeeping issues, and there was also a, a sign that was out that needed to be fixed. And so all of those violations had to be addressed prior to the license being issued, and throughout this license year, like I said, it hasn't been issued at all. The, uh, the license, licensee has been in communication with Deputy Clerk Fugie throughout the first part of the license year, asking, and I believe some council had actually granted some extensions to that, so that requirement is that you have to operate within 60 days. The most recent extension was issued so that she had until the end of last year, so December 31st, 2023, to begin operation. To date, that hasn't happened, the license hasn't been issued, and the, no subsequent requests for extension have been granted. And as detailed in the complaint, there are a number of businesses in the community that are currently seeking liquor licenses, but there's a quota that the city can only issue so many liquor licenses, and we've, we're at that number. So any new businesses that want licenses have to get a reserve license, which costs $10,000. So anyone who currently has a license and is not using that license, we're trying to, to free up licenses that aren't being used, so that businesses that will actually use them have the opportunity to get those, we make those licenses available, and then those new businesses have the opportunity to get them. So those are the grounds for the city's petition to revoke this particular license, not for any problems with the establishment itself, like we've seen in past cases with police calls or anything like that, but strictly because it's, the business hasn't been operating this entire license year in accordance, in violation of our, of the section of the code, or, I'm sorry, not violation, but it is subject to revocation because it hasn't been operating for more than 60 days. And obviously, with the most recent extension expiring at the end of last year, more than 60 days have elapsed since that, even since that extension. And so for that reason, the revocation's being pursued. Any questions?
Any questions from council?
Thank you.
Attorney Mather?
I don't know the answer to that. I think that the respondent might be able to answer that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. At this point, the respondent can present her case and will be sworn in by the clerk.
So I landed. So please state your name and address for the record.
Amanda Gail Hunt, 224 South Chestnut Street.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
So to answer your question, the business is operational. I just don't have the ability, obviously, to serve liquor. I was granted the restaurant license. Unfortunately, what has landed us here is, last year, I was homeless, and we have six children. My prior landlord told me that, whom actually is the president of the Freedom, Freedom House, I believe it is. She took me to eviction court because my special needs nephew hung on one of the chandeliers in the, in our house on Adams Street, right next to Madrid. She tried to take me to, tried to get us evicted a couple of times for various reasons. It didn't take I, they were all dismissed. The judge did tell me at the last time, he said, she's a new landlord. She is obviously very passionate about what she's put into her property. She's very upset. At some point, she's going to find grounds to evict you. I think you should go to mediation and take what she offers. I could not find affordable housing, as you have all been discussing tonight. There was no affordable housing. I was put on a waiting list for the golden house, for a family room, but because we have such a large family, that wasn't really an option. Moved the things from my house upstairs Madrid, and that's where things went awry. I, we do have a home, and we moved in at the beginning of the year. The only problem is, is that I still have some of my personal things, so if you went upstairs Madrid, like my, well, the base to my bed is actually up there, and like a couple of things. I'm moving those things by myself or with family. We don't have a large vehicle. So that's what landed us into the, all of the other things inspections comes through should pass unless there's something new or something that was overlooked from before. It's just. In February, my ex-husband committed suicide. And that was what I was mainly focusing on, was my children. And this last year has been, pardon my language, but absolutely fucking terrible with loss, Ryan. I'm sorry. Um, our best friend and employee, and actually Ryan's roommate, the kids after the, after the divorce, lived with Jen and Ryan, and Jen. Jen passed away in September of liver failure, and our other best friend and roommate, business partner, and our other business, passed away last April. He committed suicide too. So I was focusing on the kids who've lost so many, so much, so many people. I would like to keep the liquor license for obvious reasons. I think Madrid is a great asset to, or, I'm sorry, this is really nerve wracking, and I don't like crying, especially in front of city leaders. I think Madrid adds to Green Bay, especially the downtown, and I think it's, if, if we can somehow salvage it, I would, I was planning on opening next month. I had just have to schedule the inspections and get the rest of the personal effects out of the upstairs of Madrid. I don't know if you have any questions?
Thanks for your testimony. Any questions from council? No, okay, thank you. Attorney Bungert?
Yep, now we would move on to rebuttals, if the city has any, any statements? Nope. Right. And at this point, we can move to deliberation in closed session. Um, it might still be easier for us to go because of all the reporting equipment.
Sure. All right, entertain a motion. Alder makes a motion to move into closed session, seconded by Alda DeLee. Alder, do you have the language again?
The council may convene in closed session pursuant to section 19.851A Wisconsin statutes for purposes of deliberating concerning a case which was the subject of any judicial or quasi judicial trial or hearing before that government body. The council will thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to section 19.852 with stats to take action on items discussed in closed session, if appropriate, and to consider the remainder of the agenda.
Thanks, Alder. So we have the motion and a second. We'll use the board. Assistant, move into closed session.
You may vote. Alda DeLee, Alder Presley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that is unanimous. We're moving into closed session. All right, I'll entertain a motion to return to regular order of business. Alder Johnson makes a motion to return to regular order of business, seconded by Alder Hankfist. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Alder Johnson with a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this hearing until June 11th, at which time we invite the respondent back to report back on the progress of the outstanding violations.
All right, is there a second for that?
Yes.
Seconded by Alder Eck. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. That motion has been adopted. Now, on to ordinances first reading.
For what?
Uh, yeah.
That doesn't, no, that one doesn't need to be due for final.
Three. Alder Johnson makes a motion to suspend the rules and take up items one and three with one rule called vote, that was seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor of that will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Those ordinances have been advanced to a second and final reading. Now on item two. Oh, sorry. Yes, motion to advance made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Prophet. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Now they're advanced. On item two, a motion.
Motion to refer staff.
Alder Johnson makes a motion to refer item two to staff, seconded by Alder Eck. Discussion? Seeing none. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. That item is referred. Petitions and communications? Alder Johnson?
Can I just, is it possible to just read this, but then still submit it electronically so it doesn't have to publish?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, and the reason I want to read it, because, you know, I did make it very clear to Bay Lake City Center Lofts in Spring Lake, that I wanted to make a public commitment, right, that, that we are committed to working with them. So I will submit this again via electronically, and do not wish for this to be published, but for consideration of possible action to work with Bay Lake City Center Lofts and Spring Lake Church, and to present to common council within 60 days, a plan to mitigate concerns regarding facade improvements in handicap parking utilizing the city's facade grant program funded by ARPA and/or block grant.
Very good.
So I will submit that.
Alder Hutchinson, do you want to?
No, Bay Lake City Center Lofts is the whole building.
Yeah, Alder, you had, you'd wanted staff to work on some potential parking solutions downtown.
Oh, yes.
But you can just submit that.
I'll submit it later.
Okay, sounds good. Motion to adjourn made by Alder Eck, seconded by Alder Johnson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Were adjourned. Thanks.